Excellent. Mr. Marshall, just confirming that we have you in attendance.
I am here.
Excellent. We do miss your in-person attendance, but we'll accept the virtual today.
I got halfway and then had to turn around.
It is nasty out there. Understood. Next month. We'll all be here.
Hope so.
Hope so. Okay, let's, let's go. Let's do it. We're recording. Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting of the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, March 8th, 2023. We're a little late today. It's 9:42 for the record. And the first item on the agenda is the roll call to determine our quorum, which is razor thin, I think, today, but I'm going to hand it over to you, Tracy. Do that.
Ms. Carr?
I'm here. Thank you.
Ms. Chandler?
A present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Ms. Ferris? Ms. Ferris is online. I'll call Catherine to her.
I'm here.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Ferris.
Good.
Ms. Jacobson?
Here.
Ms. DeLitten?
Here.
Ms. Morales O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Here.
Ms. Simon?
Here.
Ms. Stoller?
Here.
Mr. Teixeira?
Good morning.
Mr. Young?
I also turned around this morning, but I only made it to my front porch and looked up at the mountains, what was going on, and just came back in the house. So I am here this morning.
Nice one. Excellent. Thank you all so much for being here. It's a challenging day. It's a challenging month. It's a challenging quarter, challenging year, challenging decade. I'll stop there, but I know it is. It's pretty serious out there. So thank you all for making the effort to join us this morning. We really appreciate it. And at this time, I'm actually going to turn it over to Executive Director Reagan for a quick announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, members of the APC and the public. I'm Julie Reagan, TRPA's Executive Director. I wanted to a welcome you and thank you for logging in on this stormy day. I also wanted to make a quick announcement to give a little perspective on Kim Chevalier's presence here at the APC. You all know Kim well. But Kim was recently promoted to Deputy Director of TRPA and Chief Partnerships Officer. So my former position at the agency before I became the Executive Director. And Kim will be helping me officiate on staff's behalf at the APC this morning. I may have to pop out before the meeting concludes. So I wanted just to set that announcement up. And of course, Kim is such a great talent. We're so lucky to have her in this new executive role at TRPA. Kim has been with the agency for about eight years in her former capacity as the EIP Department Manager. And prior to joining the agency, she worked for about a decade in Arizona with the U.S. Institute for Environmental Conflict Resolution and has exceptional facilitation and mediation skills, as you all know, and has worked with all of our partners in the basin. And I know you'll be happy to welcome her when we see you in person at a future meeting. So congratulations to Kim. And I appreciate the chance to make that announcement before we get the meeting going. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Julie. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you.
Welcome to APC.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, let me go over the meeting rules for the day. For members of the public to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov. Under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting. Hire meeting for March 8, 2023. There you'll find a link to our public webinar hosted on Zoom today. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate agenda item. With your hand raised, you'll be unmuted by a TRPA staff member and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone today, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and you'll be unmuted. To my fellow APC members, if you wish to speak, you can also raise your hand in Zoom. You will find the hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or have sidebar conversations. Please, everyone, remember to mute your microphone unless you'd like us to hear your background noise. And I would ask all my remote members, if you so choose, to turn on your cameras, if you're able, so we can see your faces. And now I'm going to move on to item two, which is approval of the agenda. I'm going to ask staff if there's any changes to the agenda. Okay, confirmation that we have no changes, and I will deem the agenda approved as it was posted for the record. Now moving on to item three, Public Interest Comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission at this time, please raise your hand by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing *9 on your phone, and you'll be called on unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Please note APC is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on the agenda. And Catherine, I'm going to turn this over to you to manage our public comment. From the room? No one in the room? On Zoom now is your opportunity.
Mr. Chair, we have a hand raised online. Lawrence Wodarski. If you are here, you can address the APC.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Lawrence Wodarski, and I am making this appearance on behalf of my company to support the plan amendment to allow the 947 Tahoe project, excuse me, to be a condominium ownership development. I'm the owner. Yes.
Can you hear me? Yes. You, let me stop you right there. This is for public interest for non-agenda items. And we will be hearing that particular item, which is 5A here in about five minutes. And so that would be the appropriate time to make your comment on that project, not right now. Is that okay for you?
That's okay. I have lowered my hand. Sorry.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I don't know why my hands raised on the phone.
Thank you, Catherine. Okay, I almost got my gavel out, but I didn't have to. I do want to use it someday. All right, item four, Disposition of Minutes. We have a set of minutes from our January 11, 2023 meeting on page four of your packets. I thought they were very extensive. Those are some of the longest minutes I've ever seen, actually. Nice work. No, very well captured. And now I'm going to turn it over to my fellow APC members for any questions, comments on the minutes. Mr. Teixeira, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with your comments about the minutes are very good, although it's not the longest set of minutes that I've seen in TRPA. However, that being said, on page 16, under APC Member Reports, the second paragraph starts with Ms. Morales O'Neal informed that Ms. Charlotte Hales has been appointed to the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. It's actually, she was elected. She was elected in November, and she took her seat in January. So my suggestion would be Ms. Charlotte Hales has been elected to a seat on the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners, having been elected last November.
Good catch, Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on the minutes? Okay, seeing none.
Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Chair, I would move the January 11 minutes for APC with the amendment as described by Mr. Teixeira.
Thank you, Steve.
This is Susan. I'll second that.
Thank you, Susan. We have a motion and a second. I would ask all those in favor to please say aye.
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 Any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, we have a affirmative vote on the minutes. Thank you so much. Okay, I'm going to move us now into the meat of our agenda. Item five, Public Hearings. Item 5A is Possible Recommendation on Proposed Amendments to Washoe County's Tahoe Area Plan to Allow Single Family Condominium. Oh my gosh, let me try that again. Single Family Condominium. Useless. Good enough. In Special Area 1 of the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone. Information on this item can be found on page 19 of your packet. And I'm now going to turn it over to Jacob Stock with TRPA to introduce Courtney Waikie from Washoe County and present on the.
Boka. Boka.
Remember to mute your microphones, all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, you know, if I'm coming to you with a zoning amendment, it's going to be a mouthful, so. Jacob Socks, Senior Long Range Planner with TRPA. Like you said, I'm here to tee up a presentation by Washoe County staff on a proposed amendment to their Tahoe area plan. So following the presentation, we'll have public comment. We'll ask for comments from APC members. And the APC may choose following those comments whether or not to recommend this item for approval at the governing board. So the Tahoe area plan or TAP was approved in 2021. It encompasses the entirety of Washoe County's jurisdiction in the Tahoe Basin. The plan includes town centers in Incline Village and Crystal Bay. This proposed amendment aims to allow single-family housing limited to condominiums in Special Area 1 of the Incline Village Commercial Town Center. This zoning change will allow for the option to subdivide multifamily rentals into owner-occupied condos, which is currently not allowed by the zoning. The amendment also codifies a policy requiring that condominiums are only allowed in the zone when part of a mixed-use or affordable housing development. You'll be hearing more from county staff about this, about the justification for this amendment in Courtney's presentation. So this has already been approved by the Washoe County Board. That was on January 17th. They approved a Development Code Amendment applying this change. We had an informational session with ARPIC at the last meeting. I believe that was February 22nd. We heard a lot of public comment at that meeting. We also got a recommendation from, from the ARPIC to look into region-wide, to look into creating a more robust definition for mixed-use development in the region. So that's something that we're looking at currently through a separate process. Governing Board approval is still required for this amendment to go into effect. TRPA staff have reviewed our first draft, or we've reviewed now both first and second draft of the IAC of this amendment. We don't anticipate any conformance issues with the regional plan. Based on your comments today, Washoe County will work with us to complete any revisions and bring an amendment proposal back to ARPIC and to governing board next month. And so with that, I'll introduce Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner with Washoe County, to share more information on the proposed amendment.
Thanks, Jacob.
Okay, excuse me. Okay, good afternoon. I see my presentation is up. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner with Washoe County. Thank you, Jacob Stock, for that introduction. I will try my best not to be duplicative, as I have a few slides that were similar in the background. Next slide, please. Okay, the request is to amend the Tahoe Area Plan Appendix A Development Code Standards, Article 220 Tahoe Area, to add single-family dwellings limited to airspace condominiums as an allowed use in the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone, Special Area 1. And to amend Article 220.15 to add reference to an existing Tahoe Area Plan Land Use Policy 2-9, which states, "Single-family dwellings shall only be allowed in the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone when they are part of a mixed-use development or when they are affordable housing units." Next slide, please. Okay, so I'll try and be brief here. Jacob did cover a majority of it. As he stated, in January of 2021, the BCC, the Board of County Commissioners, did adopt the Master Plan Amendment incorporating the Tahoe Area Plan thereto and adopted an amendment to the Development Code incorporating Article 220 Tahoe Area Plan and Article 220.1 Tahoe Area Design Standards. In May of 2021, the TRPA Governing Board adopted the Washoe County Tahoe Area Plan and amendments as necessary to the TRPA Code of Ordinances. In late 2021, the county received an application for a special use permit to develop a 40-unit multifamily project on two properties in the Incline Village Commercial Special Area 1 Regulatory Zone. It was later determined a special use permit was not required for multifamily dwellings in the Special Area 1 of the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone, as it was an allowed use outright. Subsequently, the applicant submitted a tentative map to subdivide the proposed multifamily dwelling project into single-family dwellings as condominiums. It was at this time that it was discovered by both TRPA and county staff that single-family dwellings, even limited as condominiums, were not in allowed use in the Special Area 1, even though it is allowed in the broader regulatory zone of the Incline Village Commercial Zone. As a result, in July 2022, the same applicant submitted a Development Code Amendment application to the county, WDC A22-0002, to add single-family dwellings limited to condominiums as an allowable use in the Incline Village Commercial Special Area 1 Regulatory Zone. For the county, the requested amendment only impacts the Development Code as the county adopted Appendix A Development Code Standards of the Tahoe Area Plan separately from the Master Plan into the Development Code. Since TRPA adopts the whole document as the area plan, the same request for TRPA purposes is for an area plan amendment. In November of 2022, Washoe County Planning Commission reviewed the proposed amendments to the County Code, Chapter 110 Development Code. It voted unanimously to recommend approval of the amendment to the Board of County Commissioners. In December of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners introduced and conducted a first reading for Bill 1888 and an ordinance amending applicable sections of the Development Code, as I've just described. In January of this year, the Board of County Commissioners held a public hearing and conducted a second reading and adopted ordinance number 1696, amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Article 220 Tahoe Area. As Jacob referenced, we also took the, staff presented the requested amendment as an informational item to the ARPIC on February 22nd. All of these meetings were open to the public and were appropriately noticed. Next slide, please. Additionally, the county did require that the applicant host a neighborhood or community meeting prior to any of these public hearings. A total of 30, approximately 3,300 individual email recipients received the meeting invitation. There were 34 people in attendance. Public comment really throughout the entirety of this process includes a mix of both support and opposition for the proposed amendment. Many of the comments have focused on a specific residential project that I previously described known as 947 Tahoe. Next slide, please. For reference, Special Area 1 is outlined in red here, which is within the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone. So I've stated, Special Area 1 parallels Tahoe Boulevard. It begins on the east side at Southwood Boulevard and extends to the west boundary at 836 Tahoe Boulevard. It encompasses roughly about one to two parcels deep or adjacent from Tahoe Boulevard. Next slide. So in red here is the verbatim or the exact text amendment that would occur if this area plan amendment was to be approved, adding that single-family dwelling limited, and that's with the asterisk there, limited to airspace condominiums and when associated with an approved tentative subdivision map of multifamily and would be limited to one unit per parcel. Essentially, that is saying no detached single-family structures. Next slide, please. The second portion of the request would add reference to existing land use policy that is located in the Master Plan, Land Use 2-9 of the Tahoe Area Plan, clarifying that this policy will apply to all of Incline Village Commercial, including Special Area 1. And that states that single-family dwellings will only be allowed in this regulatory zone when they are part of a mixed-use development or when they are affordable housing units. With that, that concludes my presentation. We do have the applicant to the county for the requested amendment on the call. And I'll leave that up to the commission on whether or not you wanted them to speak at this time or limit it to public comment. Otherwise, I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Waikie. Mr. Marshall, do you have a recommendation? Should we go for the applicant now or should we go for APC member comments first and then allow the applicant at the beginning of public comment?
It's your, it's your choice, Chair.
Let's go ahead and have the applicant speak now, if they're available, just so we can kind of get the full picture here, and then APC members can dive in.
And just to be clear, Washoe County is the applicant before us, but this group was the applicant before Washoe County.
That makes sense. Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah.
Do we have the applicant to Washoe County available to jump in? Got him, Catherine?
Yeah. Karen Teal, if you were unmute.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you, Ms. Teal. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Brendan. My Amazon Alexa was going off in the background, so it took me a minute to unmute. So I don't know if we're going to have my presentation up or if I'm just saying a few words before you open it up to APC.
Yeah, we don't have any presentation that I'm aware of queued up.
Okay. So Kara Teal with Feldman Teal, for the record, on behalf of PALCAP, the developer of the previously mentioned 947 project. The developer was pretty deep into this process with getting the multifamily dwelling project approved. And as Courtney mentioned, submitting a subdivision map to the county to subdivide into single-family dwellings when we realized collectively, we, meaning county, TRPA, and the developer realized that single-family dwellings were not permissible in Special Area 1, which is kind of an anomaly in most community plans and area plans throughout the basin. If multifamily is allowed, subdividing into single-family dwellings is almost always permissible. So this was kind of a surprise to see that single-family dwellings as condos were not permissible in this area. And so that's what initiated this amendment. And I'll be brief. I mean, to to clarify for everyone, in Tahoe, subdivisions are limited to airspace condominiums. So a project first has to be approved as a multifamily project, and then it can be subdivided into single-family dwellings. So that's the purpose of this amendment, is to allow for that second step of subdividing an approved multifamily project into single-family dwelling airspace condominiums. And just to be clear, there is no difference between multifamily and single-family condominiums, except for the form of ownership. Again, when the project is approved as a multifamily dwelling, the environmental impacts are reviewed at that time. And upon finding that there will be no significant impact, in this case, the project was approved, the next step of subdividing into single-family dwelling condos has no, there are no physical changes. So there's no physical consequence to permitting the second step of dividing into single-family condos. And we would just encourage the APC to recommend approval to the governing board as the amendment will encourage redevelopment. It'll promote walkability, bikeability, which are all the goals of the, the area plan amendment. And finally, just to be clear, because you may hear some comments of what this amendment is likely to do. And we just want to point out that the amendment does not prohibit multifamily dwellings in Special Area 1. That's still a permissible use. The amendment does not preclude workforce housing in Special Area 1. It doesn't preclude commercial development in Special Area 1. It doesn't impact density, height, or any other development standard. It doesn't impact traffic. It does not generate environmental impacts. And finally, it will not result in the proliferation of condominiums throughout Special Area 1, which you may hear from some people in opposition of the project. And I'll close with that. We're available. The developer's also in person at the meeting if anyone has questions of him. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Teal. First, Mr. Marshall, can I just ask for you to validate Ms. Teal's comment that this is just a common step that in fact, in order to subdivide multifamily airspace condos into single-family, that this step needs to occur, and that's merely all it is. That's kind of what I heard Ms. Teal articulate.
So let's talk about this at two different levels. One level is the project itself, and the, the other level is the zoning change. So if there's the zoning change, then yes, it becomes a very simple process by which there's the, you know, what we call the two-step subdivision. First, it's approved as a multifamily, then it's subdivided into airspace condo units. That's assuming that the planning decision's already been made to allow those, that subdivision to occur. This is a little different. This is whether or not in this entire zone to allow that to happen. So it's not, it's not just limited to this building. It's a zone change for the special area. And that's what really is, is the question before the APC is, should this change be made in the zoning to allow two-step, the second step of a two-step subdivision to happen? So it's, it's, you know, I think Kara may be correct if you look at it from the aspect of this particular building. But that's, that's, the, the question's a bit broader for your recommendation. That's whether to allow this to occur within this zone.
Thank you for just clarifying that. I was thinking the same thing. Typically, this zoning would have been allowed first, and then that subdivision would have taken place secondarily. So we're looking at it a little bit backwards here, I think. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And I am now going to go to my fellow APC members. I see hands being raised, which is great. Vice Chair Carr, why don't you go ahead and start?
Thanks. I just have a super quick question. What is an airspace condominium?
An airspace. I can, Jacob, do you want to take that, or I can do that?
Go ahead, John. Yeah, you're already going.
An airspace condominium is basically the, the the unit in space. So you have a condominium unit. And instead of it being a land subdivision, it's a subdivision of the space that is occupied by the condo unit, condominium unit. So it's kind of, for want of a better term, an airspace subdivision or an airspace condominium. Does that help?
Maybe. So the condominium may be a building with multiple units within the building. There's not like airspace between the units, more like.
No, it's, you have, you have a building with individual condominiums in it.
Okay. Okay.
And the subdivision is going from the building as one multifamily, uh, lot. APN to individual condos being, uh, owned separately and as separate lo- as separate APMs, APNs, assessor parcel numbers. So they are the airspace unit within that one building or multiple buildings that So i- it allows the sale and transfer of an individual unit within a larger building.
Thank you very much. That, that does clarify it. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jennifer. And just to add on to that, so as it, and now talking about this project just quickly, so prior to this approval in the multifamily, when, when it was approved as a multifamily building, that would not have been all separate APNs. Is that true?
Correct. That's one, you know, usually it's just limited to the, um, the physical parcels on the ground as opposed to the airspace above the ground.
Right. So a lot, a lot more ownership subdivided. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Tashara, go ahead. Oh, you're muted, Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a process question or suggestion. Uh, there are environmental, uh, analyses, documents in the packet. And it seems like before we get to even APC questions, certainly public comment, it might be good to have the appropriate county or TRPA staff just review what's in, in particular, I'm interested in the environmental checklist. Um, but I think that's an important part of our decision today. And I know based on the public comments that we have reviewed, uh, there are some questions related to those that the public has. So I just thought a staff presentation on those documents might be in order if it's up to you, of course.
I think that's a good idea. Jacob, are you prepared to do that for us?
Uh, yeah, I just pulled up the packet. Um, and just to be clear for, um, APC members, um, the purpose of, of the area plans in two thousand, in, in, uh, twenty twelve was to give, uh, greater local land use autonomy to the counties and, and the city of South Lake Tahoe. And so when we review an IEC, and this is typical for when we review any IEC, um, or, or conformance checklist or packet, we're reviewing strictly for conformance with the regional plan. Um, so, so we're, th- the purpose is to give some autonomy to, to the local governments. And but, but maintaining, um, uh, compliance with the region, with the larger regional plan. So, um, Mr. Tashara, do you have any sections in particular you're interested in? Um, I can, I can address those. Let me get to the IEC here.
It starts on page, uh, sixty-one. Of the packet. Can I just ask while you're looking for it, since we're not in California here, there's no SEQA. Ms. Waiki, was there any environmental review that Washoe County performed outside of TRPA's initial environmental checklist process?
Um, you're correct. There, the state of Nevada does not have any specific, um, environmental review processes for, for something like this, other than consistency and conformance with our own, um, master plan and, um, plans of the, the Washoe County. So we, we, our, our review in environmental analysis was specific to the requirements of TRPA.
Okay, we're not on federal land, we're not doing the, uh,
Right.
So we're relying on the IEC here for our environmental threshold determination.
Correct. And I don't know if it would be helpful. I know, um, there are certain, um, findings of the IEC that I specific, that are a little bit more, um, uh, pertinent to the request for Jacob. I don't know if it would be helpful, but, um, I believe number eight land use, population, housing, and transportation were the areas of most, um, substance for the, uh, this particular request when reviewing the IEC. I don't know if that helped you, um, Jacob, in kind of wanting to, um, target, look at the large packet before you.
Yeah, I can address those, those pieces.
Yeah.
Again, for APC, when, um, when we receive these packets, um, they're submitted to TRPA by the applicants. The IEC was completed by, uh, Washoe County staff and then submitted to me. And I reviewed it and returned comments to them and, and then they, and then they sent me a final draft. Um, so the, the pieces that are most pertinent, I think here would be land use. And so we have the questions, um, does this include, uh, uses which are not listed as permissible uses in the application, uh, area plan, plan area statement, or adopted community plan or master plan? The answer there is yes. We're adding a new, uh, we're adding a new use to this zone. Um, and then the second question is, um, does it expand or intensify an existing non-conforming use? And, uh, the answer there is no. There, um, there are not existing, uh, non-conform, thi- this wouldn't, um, apply to existing non-conforming condominium uses in the zone. Um, and the justification that the county gave for this section, um, is, is really highlighting the similarities between, uh, multifamily rental and, um, ownership, uh, con- condos as uses. Um, and, and they argue that, a- and Courtney can elaborate on this if she'd like. They argue that, uh, adding this additional use will allow another option, um, to facilitate the, uh, the, the type of, of walkable communities and town centers that, that the area plan is trying to accomplish. And, and I would say that's, uh, when, when you look at it in combination with the, uh, with the activation of that policy around mixed use, um, uh, requiring mixed use for, uh, condominium subdivisions, I, I, I think that's largely correct. Um, from a policy standpoint, I'm speaking about policy, not the individual project here. Um, so any questions about land use on that? I can go to population and housing if you guys are still interested.
We're interested.
Yeah, okay.
Does anyone have questions on land use? I see a lot of hands up, so why don't you just go ahead and unmute if you have a question on, on, uh, land use? For Jacob.
Mr. Chair, this is Ellery.
Hi, Ellery. Go ahead.
Hi, um, it's, it's related to land use. It's not really related to, um, that particular analysis. But I was just curious and maybe Courtney would hand, have the answer to this. Um, is there a reason why the TAP did not specifically include single family condominiums to begin with? Um, just was curious to know if that was, um, intentional with reasons behind it? Or if it was merely, you know, simply an oversight?
Thank you. Um, I see that my colleague at Washoe County unmuted, uh, Mr. Eric Young. He may, um, be willing to speak to it. Eric, speak up if, if not, and I'll attempt to respond. Eric was the lead planner in the original, uh, area plan adoption and he may best be able to, uh, help support, address that. Thanks, Eric.
I can speak to it, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah. So the very original Washoe County Plan Area Statements. The reasons that they were developed this way have kind of been lost. Um, we committed to, uh, um, not changing what was there when we adopted the new master plan. I think you may remember we used status quo as much as possible. We, we needed to make some changes to come into conformance and so forth. But in terms of allowed uses, um, when you looked across the landscape of Incline and Crystal Bay, it had been divided up into Plan Area Statements. And then many of the Plan Area Statements had these special areas. And we tried really diligently to track down the, the meaning of those, how those were developed, why they were slightly different, why they weren't just included on, on their own. A- and, and unfortunately, uh, the i- that, that history and knowledge has kind of been, been lost. And so we don't really know why special area one said, uh, no single family. We do have some some hypotheses about it. And I think the best hypotheses we had is that the concept of condominiums and condominium, uh, uh, subdivision was not, um, as important and at the top of the list of the way people thought. Thirty-some years ago, when those were, or even longer, when that was developed and put into place. And it's possible that what they were trying to do was to literally prevent single family houses. And single family, uh, and, and the spread of single family, um, um, development as we would normally think of it and not to limit condominium development. But I can't say that for sure and nobody can say that for sure. It's just, um, it's a question, your, your, your question, Ellery, is something that we have all asked ourselves. And we have all searched to try and find. And there are some other, the, the other little so-called special areas. We have some, uh, questions about those two. Why are they like this? Why did they do that? And we want to assume that it was a good idea. We want to assume that they thought it through. But, but unfortunately, we just can't say today what the original reasoning was. So that, that's a, that's my answer for you.
Sounds like you remain consistent with the Plan Area Statements.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ellery, anything else on that?
No, that helps. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Any other land use questions? Go ahead and unmute.
Yes, Mr. Chair, John Hitchcock. Um, I actually can give some history on the original community plan. Remember when, when TRPA was adopting the original, uh, community plans for Incline Village and actually for all the ones around the basin? Really, the focus was really on concentrating commercial uses within, kind of within our town centers. And, and at that time, you know, residential development within town centers wasn't really thought of. I mean, that's kind of a new, you know, land use trend over the last, you know, ten, fifteen years where we're looking at, you know, promoting mixed use projects and walkable, um, walkable communities. But back in, you know, the early, mid eighties and early nineties, residential uses wasn't really a concept of, of including those uses within, within our community plan areas. So that's, there's some history. There's some history there. Um, I did have a question for, um, for Ms. Waiki. Um, the, in terms of definition of mixed use, is it mixed use with commercials or is it any type of mixed use?
Um, yeah, Courtney Waiki for the record, um, this is something that actually I, I believe Jacob mentioned in his intro statement. Both Washoe County and TRPA, as far as I understand it, definitely at the Washoe County, um, regu- regulations do not specify or define what mixed use is. Nor does it, um, uh, direct what those uses can be or should be. Um, so we are fairly limited on what we can hold, um, applicants or projects to at this time. However, that is, um, a top priority for the county-initiated area plan amendment that we plan to be initiating, um, fairly soon here, definitely, um, within the next couple of months. Um, along with working with TRPA, in my understanding, and I believe Jacob had mentioned this of trying to also look at it from a regional approach so that there's a regional standard of what mixed use is. I don't know, John, if that answers your question or if Jacob, you want to further weigh in, but I know that is, is a high priority for us. Um, specifically in relation to, um, the project, not the, the, the area plan amendment. Um, but the project that we've been referencing, um, what, what does mixed use look like? And in what is sufficient? Um, so that is a high priority for us.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Ms. Waiki. That does answer your question. I, I do have a, um, for, for Jacob, um, if TRPA is actually interested in kind of looking at the definition of mixed use from a regional perspective, I definitely would encourage TRPA staff to reach out to, uh, your, the local agencies in that process. So that, you know, whatever definition you fall on, we're all, we're kind of all, you know, on the same page. Thanks.
Good suggestion, Hitch.
Yeah.
I'll be in touch. Thank you, Mr. H. Other questions on land use? Otherwise, I'm gonna ask
Uh, yeah, this is Susan. I guess my question has to do with land use.
Okay.
On the table, it refers to land use permit as either an A or an S. And I'm somewhat unclear on what those designations refer to.
You want to define those?
Yeah, I can explain. So, um, an A is an allowed use. So that is a permit that's processed at the staff level. Um, and an S is a special use permit. So that's a pro- a permit that is, uh, would, would go to the hearings officer.
It's more of a discretionary.
Discretionary, yeah.
Thank you.
For, for TRPA purposes, this is John Marshall. For TRPA purposes, Susan, it really is, the key difference is whether or not there's a public hearing. So in allowed use, there's no public hearing. It's handled at staff level. And for anything that's a special use, then it go- it has a, has a public hearing that's noticed.
Thanks, Mr. Marshall. And I'll chime in here for the county's, um, perspective. And this is the complicated part of having, you know, two, two kind of jurisdictions. But if it indicated an ask for special use permit, they would also, or the applicant would also have to obtain a special use permit from the county as well, and that would likely be heard by the Board of Adjustment. So there would be two, two permits required from both the county and TRPA when it's a non-dis- when it's not at the staff level.
We, uh, are unable to hear you, Brendan.
Okay. I need to, can you hear me now?
Yes. You, you went
Can't hear you. We can't hear you very well.
Yeah.
Catherine, Tracy, should we move the owl or?
You may just need to lean in and use your outside voice.
Yeah.
Yeah, you were, you were doing fine before.
I don't, nothing's changed.
Being ignored by an owl. That's not good.
The owl doesn't like me. I've been in that situation before.
Yeah, I can move next, uh, next to Brice.
Okay.
Excuse my face.
Sit tight one second. We're gonna do a minor tech adjustment. How are we doing now?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for speaking up.
Okay, so, population?
Yes, let's move on to population.
Okay, so there are two questions, uh, in the population section of the IEC. The first asks whether, uh, the proposal will alter the location, distribution, density, or growth rate of the human population planned for the region. This one, um, we felt it was relatively easy. There's no change, um, to, to the density or, um, development standards in this proposal. Um, there's also no change to, um, to, to our residential, uh, unit distribution, um, system. We have time, uh, timed growth management system, uh, that distributes residential units. This doesn't change that. So, um, we found no impact there. Uh, the next question asked whether this will include a result in the temporary or permanent displacement of residents. The county here argues, um, that this is, that, that this uh, uh, proposal will result in more options for residential development. So it would actually increase the amount of residential development in special area one. Um, so, um, I think So, um, I think. You know, it, it, the, the argument being that, um, they'll see more development if there are more options for. Uh, residential development. Um, and, and that's what we have for a population.
Can I ask a clarifying question on number two there? It says, will, and I, I guess I'm. And if this is a little convoluted because we're talking about a zone change, but we're also talking about. The immediate effect of this project, nine four seven Tahoe. Says, will the proposal decrease the amount of housing in the Tahoe region historically are currently being rented at rates affordable by lower, very low income households? So, as I understand it, the project would have been multifamily rental units. And this zone change would allow single family ownership. Which could then be rented. Um, but doesn't necessarily have to. What does staff think about? To me. Multifamily rental is more towards a lower. Uh, more affordable income type use than a single family ownership. Model. So how has staff? Analyzed this question and check no, given that.
Yeah, so in the case of. Of the nine four seven project. Um, that is not current, that's not an, those aren't existing um, multifamily rental units. So, um. We've interpreted this as, um. As referring to the displacement of existing um, residential units. Um, I guess what co- could complicate it there is. The possibility of. Uh, airspace subdivisions. Could result in. The subdivision of other multifamily units so that, that. Complicates it. A little bit, um.
Do we have existing multifamily rental units in special area one right now? Does anyone know? Because that could be a complicating factor if there was some incentive to then remove that multifamily housing to subdivide into airspace condominiums. For single unit ownership.
Can I, can I just ask, are you talking about like an apartment to condominium conversion, Brendan?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Young, go ahead.
Thank you. These are really good questions and they're sort of like natural questions. There are questions that we have had along the way. I, I, I'm. As, as a, as a committee member here, I'm not going to get too much into Washoe County's analysis and so forth. But what I would like to point out, um. Is that. Uh, i- i- it, we have to be very cautious about what we know and what we assume. It's really easy to make assumptions. About the difference between multifamily and condo ownership and. What the market segment it's targeted to will be and what people will pay and who will live there. And yet, the, the, the data and the, and the science and the academic analysis. Is really just not there for us. Um, we don't have it here. We have a great, you know, environmental analysis and so forth, but. It's very difficult to do the socioeconomic analysis of the real difference between these two. And I have done it some on my own. Um, you can go look at the literature, so to speak, and even there, it's, there's no consensus. Um, it would be nice to have that provided to us today. At some sort of a more of a scientific, so to speak, level. This board likes to operate. At the level of science and knowledge and what is the data and what do we know? And this board has traditionally been. Very careful not to operate on assumptions. And unfortunately, this is one of those cases where. You can just trip and fall into making assumptions about what you think the impact might be. And, um, we are not presented here with any of the data that tells us that. And, um, the idea that approving this. May somehow cause a neighbor to get the idea to go pursue a similar idea. Um, okay, maybe, but I'm not willing to use that kind of a stretch of logic to make a decision today. I'm not going to use that kind of a assumption. To base my vote on what I hear today. I'm gonna base my vote on, to the best degree I can. Uh, the actual data and knowledge that's presented to me today, and I'm gonna do my best. Not to slip into making assumptions about what I think might be. Um, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mr. Ferry, if I could also just jump in and, um. Uh, i- to have an additional consideration to that. When, you know, as part of staff's analysis, we are not looking at this project specific. Um, obviously, we know that there is a project. Um, that is the impetus for this. However, when we're looking at the analysis, we are looking at it special area one wide. And if there was an apartment complex, and I believe there, there may be some multifamily. I know at one point I researched it and I apologize, I don't know. Like exactly offhand, um, how or how many, um. But if, if somebody was to want to do that on an existing development or maybe develop a. Uh, vacant parcel to do something similar. That policy, uh, land use two dash nine will require that it is either part of a mixed use development. Which we've already discussed, needs um, some clarification of what that looks like. Or they are have to be affordable housing units. This is the only use that would have that. You know, requirement tied to it, um, that they have to be either affordable housing units. Or they're going to have to do what we hope is a much broader and um, more clearly defined mixed use development. That I think we do want to see those type of mixed uses residential along with commercial. So I just thought I'd um, make sure to point that out, that we keep that, that um, policy in mind that applies.
Other questions on population?
Hear you. You fade, you faded out again, um, Chair.
There's a, there's a problem with the owl that it doesn't immediately reset to pick up. The person who is speaking, so if it moves off to someone else. That I, so I think that may be what the issue is, Chair. That when, if you take a break. Unfortunately, um, it means that. The, uh, the owl resets and it's not necessarily directly picking up your voice.
Talk from now on.
Yeah, just, if you can just talk the entire time, that'll work.
Okay, so, I don't know, maybe I need to. Say, hey, and cue the thing up for a second and let it get to me and then go.
I think that's right.
So we'll, we'll play with that and I'll see if I can remember to do that. So while I'm talking, how about Ms. Simon? We'll kick it over to you.
Um, okay, well, a couple of things, and I don't know quite where, uh, where we are in the board discussion. But we have a parcel here that, um, has been vacant for some time. It was a restaurant and parking lot before that, and we're talking about. Um, if this is approved forty dwellings, so that's quite an increase in population in that particular. Parcel. And then I think there could be a conflict with some of the transportation studies because. When you add, um, it's one of the worst intersections in Incline Village. And when you add that many people and cars and dwelling, whether it's single, you, single family or multifamily. You do create kind of a bottleneck. I don't think I can support, well, I, I am concerned that. Approving this amendment would set a precedent for development within. The commercial zone, and the real issue is, is this. Is this amendment. To, uh, which is very far reaching. It goes really far, as I think staff indicated. Goes far beyond the nine four seven proposal. Is this what's really, uh, best? For this commercial zone? And it might very well, I won't talk, you know, thank you, Mr. Young, I won't talk about what might happen, but certainly. The impact will be far beyond the two parcels in the proposal. And I'm questioning why that is necessary, because it will then impact over thirty five. Other parcels in this, um, area.
Mr. Chair, can I just respond to Judy's comment just, just quickly to. Um, to the APC, um. The, the project itself has already been approved.
Right.
So, you, you're, the scope of your environmental analysis here is based on. The zone change to go from multifamily to, um. Aerospace condominiums to allow that to happen. Um, and so you, you, you shouldn't really take into account. For this decision. Um, the impact associated with the nine four seven multifamily building. Now, with that said. Um, you can take into account the reasonable foreseeable if, uh, impacts associated. With moving from just single family to, uh, allowing this two-step subdivision. And whether or not that might have an overall or some, uh, impact that would. Increase development beyond what would happen. Uh, if you're just looking at multifamily allowed construction. So that, that's where you may want us to, to focus your attention, not on the specifics. Of nine four seven itself, because that project has already been approved. Um, you, and it shouldn't really be part of, of your, um. Examination of the impacts from the proposed change before you.
Um, could you just clarify if it's been approved? Without. The proposal before us, then. What, I don't, I don't understand then, because it is not a narrow amendment before us.
Well, re- remember Judy, the, the, the amendment before you. Is not to, whether to allow multifamily or not to allow multifamily. It's whether to allow single family use as airspace condominiums. So this project was already approved as a multifamily project, so it meets all requirements. It was approved by the governing board. Um, and so it can move forward as a multifamily project. The question before you is, do you want to change? The applicable zoning to allow that multifamily unit to be subdivided into airspace condos? To allow that to happen. Um, so that would be the second step of how TRPA looks at the subdivision of existing structures. Which is a topic in and of itself. So what, what it means is in your. When you, the IEC is prepared to look at the zone change or the adding of the use. That this airspace, single family use. Not whether or not you can build a multifamily building.
Okay, yeah, I do understand that.
Can I ask just a clarification if everyone can hear me? I will come back, um. So John, given that. That the project has been approved, if we approve this and the governing board approves this zone change. Is there a subsequent action on that project approval that's required then? Or does this, does that project just to? Uh, is that project allowed to just go for? And proceed with single family ownership, short of just doing the quick subdivision, but is there some? Technical or other approval of that project that will then be subsequently required? That's what I would assume.
Ye- yes, so they have to come back in and get a, a subdivision permit from TRPA. So, that's the second step. So first they have to get the zoning that allows it. Then they have to come in and apply for the, the change from multifamily. To single family airspace condos.
But that, it, you know, subdivision. That's a fairly routine process. Given, if, if the zoning allows it, subdivision is fairly routine. I'm asking more about other conditions on the project like. Okay, it was officially approved as this, but now we need to analyze it as something different.
In general, the impacts of the building are analyzed at the approval of the multifamily dwelling stage. Um, so then at the second step, you're looking at just the impacts associated with subdivision. Not the presence of the building itself. So. For example, um, you know, Judy's comments about increased traffic. Uh, would be looked at, at the initial stage. Unless, for some reason, there is something unique about the side or the impacts that would cause. Additional impacts because you're going to, uh, an airspace condominium versus a. Um, you know, a high-end rental prod- project.
To just speak on the county's part in process, um. We have not reviewed or approved the multifamily project. Um, that is a TRPA permit that is required. The county, because it is allowed, um, in allowable use multifamily, we would be reviewing. It. Or the project as a, uh, at, at the building permit stage, um. If this was to be approved in, in the applicant pursues to go to single family condominiums. Yes, the tentative subdivision map would also be required by the county, so it would be both by TRPA and the county. And the county will have an opportunity at that time to also look at, um. The impacts that, uh, Mr. Marshall just described. Um, there may be additional traffic studies required. We'll be looking at consistency with the area plan. Um, so all of that will occur at, as part of the, um, tentative map. Process at the county in conditions of approval would be appropriately applied.
Okay. All right. Thank you both for clarifying that. Ms. Jacobson, do you have a comment on this section?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask, I guess, about, you know, I ha- I have concerns about. Potential displacement of. You know, what this amendment could do to existing multifamily uses and, and the zone. Um, and I'm just wondering, you know, we, we're working on some Tahoe basin area plan amendments right now, and we've got single family allowed and. I recognize that, you know, condos or condoizing a, an existing facility. Uh, is a way to, you know, it can help to help finance a project, so. Um, I get, I get the, I get how it works in terms of making a project pencil. Um, but what we're looking at doing is putting some. Putting it some parameters around it, and I understand that, you know, there's, um, Courtney, I think you mentioned that. You can only do it if it's mixed use or if it's all affordable. I guess I would ask whether or not there could be some additional caveats or, um, I don't know, footnotes to the section. Where you could, you know, perhaps limit it, um, to, you know, the stories above the ground floor, so no. No single family on ground floor so that you're protecting your commercial, you know, uses on the, on the floor, on the ground floor areas in the district. And then also, you know, maybe. Um, for the mixed use piece, requiring a certain portion of any mixed use project to have. And, you know, a certain percentage set aside as workforce housing. Or affordable or achievable wherever you want to go with that, but just to ensure that we're not just getting, you know. Condominiums that are going to be, you know, luxury units. That are then, um, you know, owned by folks that short-term rental them. Um, and then we're not getting that type of, you know, uh, workforce housing that we want to also see in our, in our, you know, centers, right? Because that helps to provide that vibrancy in, in our centers and create these communities that. You know, you've got people that are living and working there. So I would just, that's kind of where I'm going with it is just trying to put some more protection around. The allowance of that use. The allowance of that use in that district.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobson. Yeah, is there opportunity for modification to that table, I guess, that is something that we could contemplate? I know the mixed-use definition, I think I'll just say frankly, we've determined is fairly weak. Ambiguous, there's no ratios, there's no definition really. And so. We know there's a weakness there, and I just wonder if there's an opportunity to reevaluate that, I think we've. We've determined that we would like that eventually, so. Uh, Crystal, is that all for you? Okay, Mr. Hitchcock, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, just a. Question from Miss Waikie, um, a lot of the comments had to do, we said opposition was the potential loss of. Workforce housing. And, and potential affordable units, I assume that within the area plan, you do have other strategies and, and policies that encourages. Um, workforce housing and multifamily housing within your town, within your town center?
Correct, um, this area among a handful of others, I think there's five other regulatory zones have identified. Are identified as preferred affordable housing areas. Right now, the area plan has some, some policies that, that do encourage affordable housing, recognizing the need to develop. You know, workforce and affordable housing. Is especially in, you know, areas like our town centers. However, um, the county has also recognized that there's a need to, um, further. Implement and strategize how the area plan can be, and this is part of what the county plans to do. Um, with our, our future, uh, county-initiated amendment in. Better, uh, strategizing. The county is looking at this also as a whole, um, I think. All of Washoe County, there's a, a, a need and a concern for affordable housing. Um, however, specifically in, uh, the Tahoe area of Washoe County. We are working with, um, the Tahoe Prosperity Center in an effort, um, the Washoe Tahoe Housing. Plan Action Roadmap, um, that we are really kicking off, um, a big effort there in policies. And recommendations coming out of that, that we plan to incorporate into, um, the future amendment. But at this time. We do not have any mandates or any inclusionary zoning, there is nothing that mandates that affordable housing has to happen. Anywhere in the area plan, all that it stated is that it's, uh, preferred affordable housing, and again, this amendment would not. Take away the opportunity or option to have affordable housing in, um, this special area. I, I'm sorry, now I just lost my train, train of thought, but it would, um, it, it would not take away that as an op- option. I don't know, John, if you have any follow-up for me?
No, thanks, that's, thanks, Ms. Waikie.
I ask a follow-up question, um, would short-term rentals be allowed? In the multifamily configuration as it was approved? Versus the airspace, single-family condominium development?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Gray, that's a, a great question, um. Our SDR ordinance that was recently approved around the same time that the area plan was adopted. Does allow for one. Short-term rental per parcel. So when you're looking at a multifamily development, it is one parcel with mo- many units, multifamily units. So one, uh, so to use the, the example that we've been discussing, one of the forty units could be short-term rented. Once subdivided, those are considered, um, their own unique parcel, and there could be a, a short-term rental could be applied for each of those. Newly created parcels, there's nothing that. At this time that would prohibit that. And I really try to stay away from this project specific, but, but just, I will relay that it has been publicly stated. Albeit, it's not in the proposed amendment, that the developer plans to, um, use CCNRs and re- restrict prohibit. The, um, use of short-term rentals for that specific project. I think as part of the effort that I previously discussed, um, that we are working with the Prosperity Center. That, loo- looking at some amendments to our short-term rental regulations is going to be, um, part of those recommendations. Um, there are some limitations in the NRS, um, statutes that, um, we are making sure we. Are consistent with, um, in how and when we can limit, um, the use of STRs.
Okay, thank you, so given that. Given that, and I think Special Area One has around thirty-five parcels, something like that, that this zone change would affect, how did staff? Think about analyzing the environmental impacts of going from. Potentially one STR per parcel, which are, these are large parcels to. Up to forty STRs on this one parcel. Hopefully you can hear me.
I can. I need to think about that for a second. Whether or not staff evaluated. The use. The additional. Possibility of. Future parcels that could be created. Into condominiums being used as short-term rentals. I'm, I may be, uh, stumbling a little bit on how to respond to that, apologize, um, I, I can't say. That. As part of the request, we were looking at every. Possible allowable use or of. Those parcels, so I, I, I don't know that we, I'm. Making assumptions on how, how it would be used. But it is correct. Oh, okay. One thing that could occur is that we could, and this is actually something that we have discussed, because short-term rentals, we know, is, is a big concern. In the community, it's, it's all around the basin, quite frankly, the country, so we, we recognize that we don't want to be. You know, proliferating, um, the short-term rentals. And rather than explicitly banning them in a regulatory zone or prohibiting them. For certain types of, um, regulatory zones. One option that we have, um, we believe we could implement is prohibiting them as a condition of approval. Of tentative maps, so. It would be a, if, if, it wouldn't necessarily be as a part of this amendment, but it would be something that as part of the tentative map approval. Future, single-family, um, condominiums would be. Would not be able to pursue a, uh, STR, apologize for a long-winded answer that. It, it was a, a great question, I don't know if I can clarify anymore for you.
Okay, it sounds like maybe it was not considered in the environmental analysis, and that we would be relying on some potential future. Exclusion of STRs, which we don't as APC have any control over. So, okay. Uh, Ms. Simon, I'll go to you, and then Mr. Tashara, and then maybe we can go back to Jacob to move us on to housing.
Okay, I think that, um. My understanding, and you can clarify this, uh, Courtney or John, if you like. But if the initial CCNRs permit or, or prohibit. Short-term rentals. Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, I've, I've just been knocked off by a phone call, so I can't see you, but that's okay. At any rate. Then the owners and the, the association as it is formed. Would have to change the CCNRs or could change the CCNRs, so whatever the developer envisions would be. One circumstance, but over time that could be changed. Am I correct on that?
This is John Marshall, yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna try to get my video back here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Simon, Mr. Tashara, on to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, you know, I heard earlier that a representative of the developer is in the room and in the audience, perhaps under public comment. He or she would wish to address that. I know the sensitivity of, of STRs. In, uh, in the whole basin, of course, and elsewhere, and, uh, you know, the developer may have a, a tent of what he or she wants to do right now. It could be changed, but I also heard what Ms. Waikie said about how the county may come along and say that there won't be any STRs. In those kinds of developments, uh. Multifamily, et cetera, that, uh. You know, the county could change that in the future, we just have to go today on what we know today, that's. I appreciate people thinking about other possibilities, but. We, we have a pretty narrow scope here, but again, the, the point is, the very developers representative is in the audience, then, under public comment. That person could, could provide some additional information for the APC, thank you.
I think that's right, Steve, and I'll just say, I think what we have to go on today is that STRs are allowed or would be allowed, and. We can't rely on any subsequent action that we have no control over at this time.
Correct.
Ms. Stoller, go, on to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I share Steve's sentiment exactly, and maybe. It would be possible to hear from the, the representatives of this project to. And not, not delay to public comment, but maybe here now, how they may be contemplating or addressing STRs. In their proposal, thank you.
Mr. Marshall is, how do you feel about back and forth at this time? Should we wait? You are muted.
You can ask questions, uh, if you feel like for meeting purposes, you want to have a more. You, you know, have all your public comment in one spot, you can. Uh, mark that question for the representative to come on, or you can have it now.
Okay, let's do it now, if you're, if you'd come up to the podium and please introduce yourself. Uh, and you're gonna have to speak loud. And if you could address. I think let's focus on the short-term rental issue, uh, and if you want to expand a little bit into. Kind of the flavor of the discussion so far, I think that'd be appropriate too.
Yeah, my name is Chuck Butler, I'm one of the co-developers on the nine forty-seven project, I know this subset of the larger area plan. Um, and I'm happy to kind of give you our thoughts as to what we think on the different areas.
Can everyone hear Chuck, okay? Thumbs up, you're good, Chuck.
Thank you.
All right, so, um, our, our focus on this project has always been people who want to live there. Uh, longer and on the majority of the year, most of our reservations that we have. Are people who have expressed opposition to having STRs, they don't want neighbors who are going to be transient, in and out, causing problems. Um, our condo documents, uh, currently prohibit STRs, and that's the direction, uh, that we've gone, and so. Uh, our belief is the project would be compliant with the county. As to how they want to handle STRs, we believe it really is something that should be, uh, owned and managed by the county with a cohesive strategy of how they want to have STRs. And I guess the basin in general, so, uh, whatever the county ultimately decides will be supportive and compliant with.
So just to clarify, you do not plan to prohibit STRs in your CCNRs?
We do.
You do?
That, that, with that, well, CCNR, just to be clear, is that the condo association documents?
Yes.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so.
In our draft documents that we're sharing with prospective residents. Those, there is a prohibit, a prohibition on STRs within those documents.
Okay, because I think what I just heard sounded a little counter to that, where you said you planned to follow what Washoe County would allow. Which currently they would allow STRs.
Right, okay, so let me be clear, within our. Documents. We prohibit the use of STRs. Ultimately. We will be in compliance with whatever the county comes down and says, so if the county comes down. With something later that says something different, we'd obviously adjust our documents to be in compliance with what are assessed, but. Our documents will prohibit STRs.
So what if Washoe County says STRs will be allowed?
Um, our, our documents. Will say, when they begin, that they are not allowed, because that's what we believe the residents of our community.
So you, just to be clear, so you, at this time, your CCNRs would run counter to what Washoe County allows?
I, I don't, I wouldn't use the word counter. I would say that we made a decision that is not against the rules of the county. That is reflective of what we desire. Within nine four seven, so let's say it's counter.
Okay.
I just say, we've taken view in our res- we think our perspective residents will take a view that. Uh, they want a limitation on that, so no STRs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other areas you want me to cover that have come up?
Ms. Carr, do you have a follow-up for Mr. Butler?
I do, thank you, um. This does feel like a little bit of a rabbit hole, but, um. And with all due respect, uh, to, to, um, to the developing, uh, company. I know CCNRs, the ones I live under, um, can be changed with the majority vote of the residents. And so. Is, are the planning documents for your condominium association similarly able to be changed by, somewhere down the road? If the current residents of the building get together and decide they want to do short-term rentals?
I think if ten years from now, the owners of the condominium want to get together and modify their documents, that's going to be their. Decisions as property owners to do that, and they will be. Bound by all the rules or existence at the county at that time. So. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Butler at this time? Steve, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I just want to be clear, so you said you referenced ten years, Mr. Butler, or the original CCNR is going to be, or. Or, or association going to be in place for at least ten years before they can be modified?
Uh, I didn't say that, what I said was, is an illustrative example, in ten years, if they wanted to do that, they could do that.
Okay.
My reference, dangerous, I could use twenty years, I could use five, it was a, an il- illustration.
Thank you for clarifying, appreciate it, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, no, we're good, anything else? Okay, I think we're good for now, Mr. Butler, thank you for coming up, appreciate it. All right, Jacob, why don't you move us on, it's already eleven oh eight, we're, uh, we're getting verbose here, and I'm probably the one that's most at fault for that. But let's move on to, um, I think housing is the next section.
Yeah, I'll just address housing, um, I believe that we've addressed transportation already.
Let's, let's, let's see how everyone's feeling about that, but let's, let's do a little on housing, and then maybe just briefly on transportation to make sure everyone's feeling okay.
Okay, so, um, housing also asked to, the housing section of the IEC also asks two questions. The first question is, will the proposal decrease the amount of housing in the Tahoe region? Um, the county said no, TRPA staff agree with that, this. You know, a- adding an additional residential use is not going to decrease the amount of housing, if anything, it will. Increase or have no effect on the amount of housing. In the region. The second question is, will the proposal decrease the amount of housing in the Tahoe region, historically or currently being rented at rates affordable by lower? And very low-income households, so the county had two points. Um, to justify the ans- to justify no on that question. Um, the first point was the inclusion of, um. Uh, uh, or codification of Paul, of Landy's Policy two-dash-nine, which requires, um, that. Uh, single-family condominiums shall only be allowed. Um, in the zone if they are part of mixed-use or affordable housing units, um, so the county says that this is a pol- this, uh, this is a codification of a policy. That, um. Would increase, could have the effect of increasing the amount of affordable housing. And then otherwise, the county said that, um, the proposed amendment does not impact. A property owner's ability to develop affordable housing, so it just adds another po- potential. Uh, use but does not, um, restrict the amount of, of housing. Uh, or, or, or does not restrict someone's ability to develop affordable housing. And through staffs, um, you know, strict analysis of, of compliance, we found, um, that. That was in conformance with the regional plan.
Thank you, Jacob. Questions for Jacob on housing? All right, shoot, I'm gonna do it again, can I just get clarification on number one about the decrease in amount of housing, to me, multifamily. Allowance is down to single, um, see. You know, again, we can't make. you know, again, we can't make assumptions, I guess, but if a building builds multifamily housing, that will definitely house quite a bit more people than a single-family house.
Right, so I can explain this.
Okay, thank you.
But isn't sing, single-family housing limited to condominiums? And so you can only get, um, as Mr. Marshall explained, you can only get single-family, you can only get condominium uses through a two-step subdivision. So first, the, the approval of multifamily, and then the subdivision of that multifamily into condominiums. Uh, single-family, uh, detached, single-family housing is still prohibited in this zone.
Okay. Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Don't see any hands. Let's just touch on transportation.
Okay.
And then, um, we can, we'll proceed.
Um, so as, um, as Mr. Marshall noted, we're, in this case, we're looking at a strict, uh, strictly at the addition of the single-family condominium use to this zone. Um, the county used, um, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE Trip Generation uh, manual for their transportation analysis, and that's pretty standard, um, in, in an IEC. Um, according to that analysis, the, uh, uh, sing, uh, single-family condominiums have a very similar and even slightly less uh, uh, trip generation than, uh, multifamily units, which are already allowed. And so tearing off of the previous environmental analysis that we did, which included multifamily, um, this would have, uh, not have a significant, uh, impact on traffic.
Okay, thank you. Questions on transportation? Okay, not seeing any. Are we good on the IEC, Steve? Or would you care for Jacob to describe more?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I believe that we've had a, a good, robust discussion, and I appreciate the fact that we were able to go through this before the public comment and before the APC deliberates. I think it was very helpful, again, given the scope of the public comments that we've received. Thank you.
Agreed, thank you. Okay, let's just, I'm going to go back to my APC members for, um, any additional comments on anything to do with the proposed amendments? Okay. Oh, Ms. Simon, hand up.
Oh, I'm just, so I'm just, um, wondering then, so we're, can you just outline how we're going to proceed? We're going to listen to public comment, and then we'll go back to the board?
Yes, we will go to public comment now. It'll come back to APC for further comments and deliberation, and then there are required motions that we need to make in order to recommend approval to TRPA's governing board.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
You got it. All right, let's move on to public comment on this item. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov. In the calendar, click on APC Meeting, March 8, 2023. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. And if any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission at this time, please raise your hand by clicking on the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. I am going to go to the room first to see if there's any public comment here. It looks like we have one. Please come on up and speak loudly.
Okay.
Or forever hold your peace.
Hello, I'm Tim Kane, and first of all, I want to thank you and all of TRPA for the job you guys did. It's incredible. And I know it's not easy, so thank you. Um, like I said, my name's Tim Kane, and I'm a business owner. We, I own Integrity Properties in town in Incline Village. Uh, I have been a full-time resident now for almost 11 years, um, but my family, um, fortunately was able to have a home when I was a child, so we have been a part of the Incline community since I was born. Uh, my parents retired here, and my brothers and sisters have all lived here permanently over the years. Um, some have moved to Reno, but we are a part of the community. Um, I'm here to voice my strong support for this development. Um, being in Incline so long, uh, that, that lot has seen many businesses come and go, and it has sat vacant for many years and is an eyesore. Um, it is, you know, the start of the town center and our retail area, and I am friends with many business owners, uh, whether it's business or restaurant, um, or shop owners in town. Um, we have very limited parking through that area, um, for people to come and go and spend their money and support our local businesses. You know, we have all said for a long, long time, you know, Incline Village needs beautification and ease of access, and a development like this would give that. Um, and it would be within walking distance to all the shops, and you know, we, we need for our long-term success in that city and for our, you know, owners of businesses, they need people to be able to walk to town, and this, this development will meet that need. So I am in strong favor of it, and thank you again. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Yep.
Appreciate it. Any other comments in the room?
Wouldn't it be permissible if both?
Yes. After public comment? That'd be fine.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes. Nope? Okay, let's go to Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Rhonda Tysor, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you. I am an Incline Village resident for the past 38 years. Your APC Committee meeting member packet includes a detailed description by several Incline residents and a former lawyer, giving reasons you should not approve the proposed policy change to the Washoe-Tahoe area plan. I'll summarize those pages by saying that doing so undermines the incentive for future developers to build truly affordable, achievable housing in any of the Special Area 1 or other commercial zones. The precedent will be set. This is not an assumption, this is a fact. We who don't want the policy change, we believe, based on past experience, it will open the opportunity for more short-term rentals in expensive condos in Incline. Real estate investors can afford $2 to $5 million, given their expected return on investment. 95% of the rest of the buyers cannot. We all know short-term rentals take away from our achievable, affordable housing, and we all know STRs have the best return on investment for absentee ownership. And we know that Washoe County allows unlimited STRs in Incline. And we know CCRs can be changed. Even if many of us, including myself, want to see a beautiful development at 947 Tahoe Boulevard, we are against the Washoe-Tahoe area plan amendment because of its wide-ranging and long-term negative effects. I want to emphasize that the decision to change the area plan is not favored by most residents who actually understand the repercussions and live and vote in Incline Village. In December, the developer sent out a form letter and received 49 responses that he included in the January Washoe Commissioners' meeting. But 31 of those 49 respondents did not live in Incline Village or Crystal Bay. In fact, of the 70 supporting letters he cited, which are in your packet, more than half of the respondents live outside of Incline. So my question is, when will the voices of ordinary Incline residents who live in the village be given priority in TRPA's decision-making? We Incline residents resist unregulated short-term rentals throughout our neighborhoods, which TRPA allowed in 2004. We resist increasing height, density, and coverage, which decreases the possibility of our wildfire evacuation. And we resist changing the Washoe area plan in a way that will reduce the opportunity for future affordable, achievable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tysor.
Next hand raised is Christina Hill. Christina, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. Um, I have a couple of questions. Uh, is this a mixed-use proposal? No, it's just condominiums? And, um, it showed in, uh, Courtney's presentation that if you're changing the permissible uses to single-family dwelling be allowed, and it doesn't differentiate between attached or detached. Anyway, I am a longtime planner in the basin. I worked at TRPA in 1981 when the thresholds were uh, drafted and adopted. And when you do a regional plan amendment, such as being proposed by this action, you have to make findings relative to the thresholds. And one of the thresholds is land use. And part of that land use threshold, a sub-element is, um, housing. And the first, there's three goals in that sub-element. The first goal is for mode housing for workers employed in the region, like workforce housing, affordable housing. This is not that. Goal number two, affordable housing for moderate income is encouraged for residents of the region. I don't see that being discussed. I don't see that being an option with million-dollar condos. Goal number three, remove barriers preventing affordable housing. And by using this vacant parcel for million-dollar condos, you're putting up a barrier to affordable housing. So I don't see how anybody could logically make the finding that you're not complying with the thresholds. I mean that you are complying with the thresholds, because you're not. And I am very kind of offended by that, and I'm also, um, was active in the area plan's original adoption, and Eric Young states that he doesn't remember what we decided, and I remember what we decided, and we decided to leave this multifamily, so it would be for workforce housing apartments for, that people could afford, that live and work in our community. So let's just be clear about that. And, uh, anyway, that's the end of my comments. I would strongly ask you to vote no on this amendment. I think it's bad for our community, and it's, um, horrible for Incline Village to allow more multifamily, I mean, more single-family dwellings. Thank you.
Catherine, are you? We can't hear you if you are talking.
Here, hello?
Yes, we have you, Mr. Julian.
Thank you very much. Um, I would like to support what both the of the two speakers who have just spoken have said. That's for one. I have sent you some comments via email this morning. I would urge you to reconsider this, uh, proposed code change. Not because I don't think it is, uh, reasonable to have a nice development at the corner of of Tahoe Boulevard and Northwood. I am, I am not against that project per se, but I am against the extension of the code change to the other 30-some parcels in that commercial area. It will inevitably have an impact on the incentives to build affordable housing, and I would argue to even develop small-business commercial establishments. Once you establish precedent for building luxury condos at $2.5 to $5 million a pop, you will have investors coming in to do that. And there, as people have mentioned, there is no guarantee that those won't end up as STRs, but that's really a side issue. I'm more concerned about having a Tahoe area plan that had been discussed and approved in 2021, which really did, if you read the plan, it encouraged workforce housing, it encouraged affordable housing and true mixed-use housing. And this extension of the code change to those 30-some parcels outside this two-parcel area as part of this will simply gut what was already discussed with our community back in 2020, 2021. And there hasn't been those conversations to date. Those, the conversations on this really have focused on 947 Tahoe. And that's not the point. I think many of our community members are concerned about the impact of this code change on the other 30-some parcels. So I would implore you to reconsider this, to ask the county to go back and have broader consultations with our community on our vision for those other areas of the, of, um, Special Area 1. And, um, and so that's, but it, it should not be portrayed as a group of, a minority of residents who are somehow against 947 Tahoe. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Julian.
I'll add another sentence to get the attention of the owl. The next hand raised is Cara Teal. Cara, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you. Chair and other APC members, Cara Teal with Feldman Teal on behalf of the 947 developer. Um, I want to respond to a couple of questions that other APC members had that, um, others weren't able to answer. There are approximately 46 parcels in Special Area 1. Seven of those are vacant. Two of those seven are publicly owned and therefore not eligible for development. Three of the remaining five are owned by the developer, who has no intention to do any further single-family dwelling condo development. So that leaves us two vacant parcels that can potentially be developed with multifamily and then subdivided into single-family. One of those is 0.3 acres of SEZ. The remaining acreage is 1.2 acres. So at most, another 20 or 30 single-family condominiums could be developed within all of Special Area 1. So the, the outcry that this could have far-reaching impacts and single-family dwelling condos would just pro- proliferate throughout Special Area 1 is just not, it's unfounded. And we had originally proposed this area plan amendment just for the 947 parcels, but TRPA staff and county staff suggested that would be spot zoning, so let's do it to all of Special Area 1. And I want to point out to, um, Chair, uh, Mr. Ferry's comments or concerns about existing development being subdivided into condos, there is not one single multifamily development in Special Area 1. There is no residential development in Special Area 1, except for one or two units above, I think one's above a gas station, one is part of another mixed-use. So we don't have residential development in Special Area 1. There have not been multifamily dwelling projects constructed in all of Incline Village in over 20 years. So to suggest that this amendment is going to hurt multifamily or affordable or workforce housing project is also unfounded.
This amendment doesn't prohibit any other property from doing workforce housing. Workforce housing is not gonna be built on nine-four-seven properties, whether this amendment is approved or not. Um, and then finally, to speak to the CCNRs for nine-four-seven, they do prohibit short-term rentals. And there's a provision that requires unanimous approval for that provision to be changed. I submit to you unanimous approval is almost impossible. Thank you.
Hello? Sorry, I'm getting an echo. Hello?
Yeah, we still have the echo.
Okay, wait, let me. I have two devices going. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, my apologies. My name is Helen Neff. I'm an Incline Village resident. It's not my intention to hamper any needed development for our village or any financial gains. I am not opposed to the nine-four-seven project. I just asked you to find a solution for two major issues. But before I address those issues, the, I'd just like to say, reply to two things that were commented on. The TRPA approval for this project referenced earlier was approval of a consent item, not a hearing during the June governing board meeting. And also the fact that um, there are only a limited number of vacant parcels. There is nothing that prohibits a landowner to knock down their aging commercial development on, in our town center and build a luxury condominium. But my two real big issues on this are, first of all, safe streets. The east intersection of the Incline Village Commercial Zone is an F-rated intersection, dangerous to pedestrian cyclists and vehicles. Per the TRPA threshold standards and regional plan amended in twenty-twenty-one, yes, your standards. Section four-point-one says that level of service criteria should not be below C on a recreational or scenic road. And SR twenty-eight is designated as a scenic road. I'm pleading with TRPA to address the needs of the community for transportation safety rather than just issuing a lengthy and very professionally, I must say, produced report and then not implementing and enforcing it. This simple-to-solve transportation issue needs to be addressed before this code change. We will never have a pedestrian-friendly town center without safe streets. And my other issue is, as you pointed, as was pointed out earlier, the definition of mixed-use development. In the November first, twenty-twenty-two Wausau County Planning Commission meeting at about three-and-a-half hours in the recording, the commissioners inquired about the definition of mixed-use. And county planner Ms. Waiki replied on the recording that the county has an interest in exploring this definition and it will be included in any proposed amendment to the code. And I have not seen it. The project in question has a tiny percentage of footage, nine-hundred-twenty-five square feet located on the same level as below-ground parking to be designated in this office. And thus, the project is considered mixed-use. And I ask you as planners, does nine-hundred-twenty-five square feet of commercial space located in the basement of a project with over a hundred thousand square feet of residential space define the project as mixed-use? I have reviewed the definitions of mixed-use development in the American Planning Association publication of Planning and Urban Design Standards. And a basement office of nine-hundred-twenty-five square feet does not fulfill the definition. So I appreciate that the TPRA governing board has acknowledged that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
We're circling back to Royal Kukoff. Royal, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thanks very much. Uh, my name is Royal Kukoff and I'm a local businessman and homeowner. I arrived in Incline Village in nineteen seventy at nine years old. Went to school here through high school and I've raised my three daughters here. I've seen many changes to our town over the years, some good, some bad. But nine-four-seven Tahoe most definitely lands on the good side of the ledger. Thank you for your environmental review of the nine-four-seven project and development code amendment. I'm voicing my strong support for this amendment to move forward. And Incline Village needs this investment to help our lake, economy, and community ends stagnation. For too long, more than twenty years, this site has been dormant, stagnant. I grew up with the respective families on these two sites, the Parsons family, Stanley's Restaurant, the Parks family, Chevron gas station at that time. Environmental wins, investment benefits, our lake with upgraded stormwater management controls, reduces trip generation by fifteen-hundred daily vehicle trips and vehicle miles traveled, reduces dependence on autos and parking demand. It's direct access to the bike and walking path trails, ten-minute walk to everything in town, from the beaches to all of our local businesses. Area plan implements the goals of the Tahoe area plan to concentrate development in town center and create walkable communities. The project is already approved for forty rental apartments. But the amendment is needed to update the old development code to allow single-family dwellings and ownership. Economy wins contributes forty-five million across two years to local economy from annual taxes, jobs created, new economic activity, increases property values and attracts more investment, helps address the housing shortage by adding forty new living units at town center. Research shows housing is needed at all income levels. This is what is true. The project is needed. Dozens of people have taken the time to send their letters of support. I was able to come today, but many others couldn't due to job and family responsibilities. Yes, you'll hear, you'll, you'll hear also, excuse me, from a vocal group that seems to attend and protest everything for our town, but they do not represent most of us. I hope you'll listen to those of us who are working to improve our communities as, as we raise our families and have full-time jobs here. Randy Fleischer, the developer, lives in Incline Village, is an active member of our community, consistently supports our nonprofits and more. He's planning an affordable housing project in another location. Um, and there's minimum, minimum properties available in sites where there's gonna be any negative impact. For all of these reasons mentioned and more, I'm voicing my strong support for the nine-four-seven project amendment to allow for condominium, condominium form of ownership. We need this. Thank you again, and I greatly appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoff.
And the next hand raised is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yeah, hello. Uh, thank you. Um, I have to say, this is one of the best APCs and the best questions I've heard. I've been here fifty years and, and following TRPA since the beginning. Um, anyway, I am against this project because of the overall zoning change. The, and I am, I guess, a vocal minority, but been here a long time, as long as, as Royal, I guess. Suppressing criticism, valid criticism, is, shouldn't be the go-to when you have, when the community has concerns. You know, as far, I've been a Realtor, the whole time I've been here, broker in Nevada and California. You get more money when you have a deeded condo than when you have multifamily. That's the justification or the reason that they want to do this. And you know, this two-step process that TRPA endorses is really a real problem. It's why we don't have more affordable housing, workforce housing. And because you make more money on condos as you get a deed. Um, anyway, that, that's the real reason this is being done. It does create a barrier in this, now this whole section of town. And there are, Cara, there are, there's duplexes, you know, there's, it's not all, there are some units here. But um, you know, it's not the case to say there aren't. Uh, so anyway, I hope that you'll reconsider it. Um, and as far as the Prosperity Center justifying all these things, you know, a lot of us are very concerned. It's a self-anointed nonprofit that is now touting themselves as the agency for development. And we have real concerns and would like to know more about their envisioned plan that was developed by a PR firm in Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
And the next hand raised is Vic Costello. Vic, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
All right, can you hear me? Well, that was kind of weak. I'll.
Yes.
Oh, perfect, thank you. So my name's Vic Costello, uh, live at seventeen-hundred Pine Cone Circle. Uh, this is our second winter. We've retired and moved up here, but we've had a home here since two thousand nine. And uh, and we are permanent residents. And we love it. We love Incline. And we think that the nine-four-seven project is exactly what is needed on the Tahoe Boulevard corridor. Our downtown needs a little, a little oomph. Uh, I think this is a, this could kickstart uh, some other developments, hopefully, along the corridor that would greatly enhance the downtown. Uh, anything Randy builds is gonna be first-class. Uh, and I think this might encourage other people to do the same. These types of investments are very risky. Uh, there's a lot of uncertainties. Uh, I know people think that developing is just a, a money machine and uh, that's not quite how things work. Uh, there is a lot of risk and for, for a developer to come in and propose such a first-class uh, project is um, something that should be embraced. And uh, so we, Debbie and I strongly support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next hand raised is Lawrence Wodarski. Lawrence, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you. My name is Lawrence Wodarski. I'm making this appearance on behalf of my company to support the plan amendment to allow the nine-four-seven Tahoe project to be a condominium ownership development. I am the owner of a property management company that's been serving the village community for forty-three years, providing commercial and residential property management and maintenance. We maintain and assist in the management of the three largest shopping centers in town. Consequently, I'm in constant communication with the tenants of these centers. All the tenants except the one are locally-owned small businesses. In addition, I sit on various committees within the Incline Village Crystal Bay Business Association, including the newly-formed Main Street Beautification Committee. The feedback that we receive most frequently from our small-business tenants is the need for an increase in residents who have a stake in the community. When the tourist season ends, these businesses have only local residents to support their businesses. The nine-four-seven Tahoe project is the type of development that would serve the community. The parcels proposed have been vacant eyesores in the community for many years, as everyone knows. As previously said, this developer has a future project in special area one that would include workforce housing. And this is precisely the kind of private-sector leadership we believe the community needs. The project fits within the Tahoe area plan. It would bring another level of economic vitality into the community. It would increase population density in the town center. It would reduce, as previously said, auto dependency and upgrade storm management and erosion control provisions on these vacant parcels. It's been a rare occasion, uh, in my experience in the village, when a community resident invests the time and resources necessary to upgrade the community with sorely-needed housing. And when that occurs, we're committed to assist that in any way we can. I've been an active member of Incline Village community for twenty-two years and I encourage you to recommend the proposed amendments. By the way, our company will not take a property when uh, the interest is in short-term rentals, just as a, as a fact. And then lastly, uh, I want to thank the APC for the work that you do on behalf of the lake and all of its communities. Thank you much.
Thank you.
And the next hand raised is Randall Fleischer. Randall, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, this is Randy Fleischer. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you for all the great work you do for the lake. Uh, my name is Randy Fleischer. I'm one of the co-developers of nine-four-seven Tahoe. I just wanted to um, state to the committee that when we were in the process of developing and designing nine-four-seven, we did it with the view of Tahoe area plan. We wanted to provide access to the walk and bike path. We wanted to clean the site and make it, uh, reduce the stormwater. We wanted to improve um, the, the area and the site. Um, I'm also working on a, uh, another project in the area which will provide workforce housing. But back to nine-four-seven and the area plan, I think the area plan does not preclude workforce housing, does not preclude multifamily. In our CCNRs, we're gonna preclude short-term rentals. Um, as Cara said, there's gonna be a requirement of a majority or I think unanimous consent to um, overturn the restrictions on short-term rentals. Those are my comments and I know my co-developer Chuck Butler is in the audience and he'll wrap up our comments as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fleischer.
And the last hand raised is, first name on Zoom, Dale. Dale, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you. My name is Dale Smith. I'm here to speak in favor of the, and ask you to recommend approval of item five A to amend the county development code to allow airspace condominiums in special area one of the Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zone. I'm a forty-five-year resident of Incline Village, an architect, and I've had an office here for thirty-four years. I was elected to three terms as a board of director to the local fire district, a member of the Incline Village Community, uh, Crystal Bay, uh, Business Association, and past president of the Tahoe Incline Rotary Club. I strongly support amending the county development code to allow our space condominiums in special area one. The plan area amendment is similar with other Tahoe Basin area plans, allowing multifamily dwellings alongside airspace condominium, single-family. The amendment is consistent with the Wausau County uh, master plan and will allow for more desirable development of land within this regulatory zone and helps the plan area deliver on its goal to concentrate development and identify town centers and create walkable communities. The amendment will allow nine-four-seven project to move forward and it is exactly the kind of development Incline Village needs at the gateway to its commercial core. The project will provide a positive economic benefit to the local economy and jumpstart redevelopment and further creation of community. I urge you to approve this amendment to the Wausau County Development Code. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale.
Mr. Chair, there are no other hands raised online to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. And Mr. Butler, would you like to finish it off?
I would. Thank you very much. On behalf of my partners and myself, I want to thank the uh, the APC and the TRPA professional staff. I'll give a shout to Randy for calling in from Vietnam at four a.m. That's pretty impressive, Randy, but not surprising. I had a very long, you know, speech to remind everybody of the points of this. But I, I think I really want to go back to the three core issues that seem to come up and address them on behalf of us. With regards to the traffic, that was a really big issue for us upfront. Um, and we've engaged with the community. We've talked to Nevada Department of Transportation. And we want to ensure that that is a safe intersection and we're gonna do everything we can with community and transportation to do that. I, I would like to point out, it, it will have the same impact as multifamily would. Um, and it will have less of an impact in traffic in terms of the previous uses, which was the gas station and a restaurant or retail or commercial were developed there. This project would have less traffic impact there than those things would. With regards to the STRs, uh, we know it's a passionate issue. I think you've heard a lot of us already speak to this, but you know, we, it would require a hundred percent vote to overturn what our CCNRs will have initially. I hope that that speaks to um, our tone and our, our goals here as well as the goals of our uh, you know, future residents. In addition, when somebody calls and asks about that and wants to purchase, you know, with that being a primary intent, we tell them that's not, that's not gonna be an option here. And we've dissuaded those types of people from looking at the project. Um, the longer-term impact, I think, keeps kind of getting brought up, what could happen with the, the parcel. There's only really seven parcels, five of which are privately-owned, three of which we own and control. There's only really seven parcels, five of which are privately owned, three of which we in control. That really leads to, and it's a little over anchor of the, so I, I hear the concerns about this widespread trend of things to happen. I think it's a kind of an unfounded concern candidly. I think within this area, we're really only talking about two things. A two, two small parcels, it's not some widespread, so I just wanted to, I think, frame that, people talking about thirty, forty parcels. It's not a thirty or forty parcel issue, it's really an impractical matter, it's, it's two. And then finally, the affordable, and this is an area that we always get into and I'm probably going to say more than I should on this. But you know, this amendment does not suppress affordable housing in any way. There has not been material development in this area in twenty-plus years. And you know, there's always talk about it encourages in this area, it, it, you know, it, it doesn't. You know, to truly encourage affordable housing, you have to have a public-private partnership. You have to have funds available in order to supplement and offset the cost, if you're really going to do it. To go through that, Incline Village is one of the highest costs to build in any place in the country. It's remote, you have to, all your subcontractors have to come in, you have snow loads, so the codes are extremely expensive to maintain. It's expensive to build here, so in order to do that, you have to have funds set aside in a public-private partnership to do that. None doing our project or any of these other projects will have zero impact on the success of doing affordable housing. And we want to do affordable housing, okay? We have taken the steps with a parcel that we own to engage in discussions with a lot of people like St. John's Land Trust and all these others who are trying to take this issue on. And, and we've come to the, to do this, you need a public-private partnership where there is funding available, resources in order to offset this. You have to make the project look attractive so that you can obtain incentive tax credits in order to finance the project. We have gone to our own cost of looking at this, we've come to the conclusion that you have to do modular. It is the only way to make this cost effective into this market.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah. Yes, Mr. Marshall.
Just want to, public, the time has expired.
Yeah, so. Yeah, in conclusion, it's a real issue to us and we're putting our, our money where our mouth is on that, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Butler, appreciate you finishing that off. I do see a hand raised, but I believe Ms. Tyser already commented, so I'm going to go ahead and thank you, we got your comment previously, Ms. Tyser, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment at this time on this item. Thank you all for commenting, we really appreciate your engagement. Can I go back to my APC members now for final deliberation, questions, comments, based on what we just heard on public comment? And based on, you know, everything else we've been discussing, so I'll go to you, Ms. Simon.
Thank you, I have a question for John and it was about the, the requirement for CCNRs or for homeowners that are living in units controlled by CCNRs, that there has to be a hundred percent to change the CCNRs, and I wondered if that was or could be in conflict with Nevada law.
I don't know.
Yeah, I've never heard of a hundred percent.
Well, I think that's the choice of the developer to initially start at that, so that's as far as, you know, I, I couldn't tell you whether or not Nevada law precludes a hundred percent. But I, but I think I can tell you with confidence that that is up to the developer to set what those voting requirements are in the first place. So unfortunately, I'm, I'm sorry, I could try to scurry off and get an answer to that, but I just don't know whether or not that a hundred percent is precluded by Nevada law. I assume that if they're including it, they have to have a pretty good reason why they are.
Right.
All right, thank you, Ms. Simon, Ms. Stoller.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if there will be discussion on, on the item when we move to the motions.
Do you mean discussion specifically on the motions themselves?
Yes.
Well, we could do that, or I think we could do that now.
Okay. If we, if we do that now, I would like to make a comment now.
Please, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I, I wanted to say that I really have appreciated this discussion and as well as all of the public comments. I was definitely of one mindset before we started this conversation. But I've since changed my mind. To Mr. Marshall's point, the question before us is an ordinance change which will allow single-family residential airspace condos as well as multifamily developments. And the way I was thinking about it before is that the environmental impacts of this ordinance change would be minimal, there would be no increase in the number of units, no increase in density and therefore no increase in traffic or, or other, other kind of significant environmental impacts. But through the short-term rental conversation, I learned that this ordinance could potentially allow one short-term rental per airspace condo versus one STR per multifamily development within Special Area One. And so while I have no issue with the project itself and I believe the project proponents have very thoughtfully addressed STRs under their, their own steam. I believe we are obligated to evaluate the potential environmental impacts and make a finding of no significant effect for the most intensive use allowed by Washoe County's proposed, excuse me, proposed ordinance change. And from what I've heard about the environmental checklist and how it was put together, I don't think that's been completed yet. So for that reason, I believe I will be a no on these items, I don't think it's quite ready. I would encourage Washoe County to come back to APC with the revised IEC that contemplates the maximum STRs that could be allowed within Special Area One as a result of this code change, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoller. Ms. Jacobson, on to you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I I also appreciate the dialogue here today and appreciate both sides. I understand, you know, I, I think I agree with Ellery, I, I understand that you know, that the, the subdividing of these units can be a tool to get the type of sort of reinvestment in, in our town centers that we, you know, are looking for, for revitalization. But I, I think I'm not prepared to move this forward to the governing board today, that would be my take, I think it needs a little bit more thought. And I would like to see some consideration to kind of putting some parameters around that allowance that really sort of safeguards workforce housing and safeguards, you know, commercial space on the ground floor. So I'd like to see a little bit more thought into that use allowance. That's it for me.
Can't, we can't hear you. Brendan, are you speaking? Because we can't hear you.
Okay, I'll come back to me. I think I've got him now. Uh, members, let's, what are your comments, questions?
I'll, I'll weigh in, Mr. Chair.
Steve, go ahead.
Thank you. And I appreciate the very thoughtful comments from our colleagues, Ms. Stoller and Ms. Jacobson. I'm pretty familiar with this property and it's been a blight in the community for a long time. And I'm very sensitive to business in the community because a lot of my work is done with businesses in the communities throughout the basin. And I know how much the businesses there need, need people and need activity in the downtown area. The principal barrier to affordable housing is yes, zoning to some extent, but it's the subsidies that are necessary. And I'm glad to hear that Mr. Fleischer and his associates are looking at a partnership to be able to build affordable workforce housing in the Incline Village area where the studies show it's seriously needed, as it is in most of our communities. However, we have a narrow band in front of us. We, we can't, I don't think, I think we can make the findings, I appreciate the fact that there's concern about the STRs. I believe that Washoe County, the Board of County Commissioners and the staff will do everything they can to make sure there's no proliferation of VHRs in the Incline Village area. Certainly, the community has expressed that on many occasions. So I'm, I'm concerned about an overreach of what's before us today. I think as the chairman pointed out at the beginning of this hearing, we have a pretty narrow scope. So I am prepared to, to support the motions that are before us today to move this on to the governing board with the understanding that the governing board is looking at the definition of, of mixed use and, you know, may have some other information before them at their time that we don't necessarily have today. So based on what we have in the record, based on what we've heard in public testimony, I'm prepared to support, support both the motions that are before us, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, Mr. Young, go ahead.
Thank you, everyone, what a great discussion today. It's maybe sometimes rare that you see both sides having such valid input and being put in a, in a position of, of trying to, to really understand the scope of our decision and the context of what both sides are saying. So as I, I, I think one, I'm going to end up supporting this. And I think maybe one of the reasons that I will end up supporting it is because of maybe ironically, my knowledge of what's happening with the Prosperity Center, the value of it, the, the dedication of the people involved. It is not a, a, a minority of activists. It is a, a, a large and growing group of community members who have very valid concerns and have decided it's time for them to do something about it. And I would encourage everybody in Incline Village to, to learn about, more about what they're doing, to learn more about the housing study that they've produced and how they intend to go about implementing it. And I have any, for the first time, I have an enormous amount of confidence in where the county and the community is going to be able to go with some affordable housing and workforce housing progress. It has been a difficult barrier for us forever in Incline Village. And the ongoing effort now at the Prosperity Center is the most serious and comprehensive and dedicated effort that has occurred to date. And I believe it's going to pay off in a much more comprehensive analysis and review of, of how to look at the area the entire area. And so I think Washoe County's view and, and my view is that this amendment even if it did require workforce housing or affordable housing, or if it did have some kind of, of, of a, of a nod to that. It's not what the community needs, it's not the, it's not the solution to the housing issue in Incline Village. And that a vote against this is, is not a vote for eventual multifamily housing there, it's not a vote for eventual workforce housing there. It's a vote for an empty parcel to continue sitting there. That's what, that's what a no vote is today, is it's a, it's a vote for an empty parcel, because I believe that, that the complex economic market issues that exist up there are going to dictate that's what happens. So both sides have come forward today with people who have lived there since, what, they were nine, since they were kids, who graduated from high school there, who, who see this area as their home. And they're both right. This investment in this area is likely to do some very positive things for us, for TRPA. The environmental redevelopment alone is exactly what we were trying to achieve. And so those positives, I think, are worth moving forward on. And it's also worth all of us being very positive and supportive of what the Prosperity Center is trying to accomplish in their more comprehensive widespread efforts to tackle this issue in Incline Village. So I, I don't see a yes vote on this as, as a as, as, as a way of another, as another barrier to affordable or workforce housing. I see them almost as, as two separate things and that we're giving them conflated. Now, the, the, the discussion on short-term rentals and the impact of short-term rentals. There is probably no agency better equipped to do the actual scientific analysis of what the difference is. But right now, as we sit here today, that is an extreme assumption that all of these are going to become short-term rentals. And even if they did, we don't have any data or any kind of a scientific approach that tells us how that would really impact things differently. So I can't base a vote on an amorphous potential for what might happen with SDRs, although I, I recognize the problem, I recognize the issue and I fully respect where people are coming from with that. But I don't believe that I can base a vote on, on that projection. So with that, I apologize for the rambling statement, but I believe I'm gonna, I'm going to be able to support this as we move forward.
Thank you. Thank, yeah, thank you Eric for your comments, I appreciate it. Let's go to Ms. Simon and then Ms. Stoller.
Okay, I don't think that I can support the motion, but I, I would like to thank Eric for his analysis. I do track the Prosperity Center, they've done some good analytical work, but they, it has not resulted in any increase in workforce housing to date. So, and I, I think, you know, this is nothing against the nine four seven project because that would stand on its merits, but I think this proposal before us or the motion that is soon to come before us is much more far-reaching than I am able to go at this time.
Brendan, have you jumped out for a second?
The chairs just have to step out, she'll be back in one second. Mr. Drake, did you want to make a comment?
If I may, thank you. This is a very difficult decision for me, I I own a business in Incline Village, I'm very knowledgeable of the site, this property. I've talked to a lot of people on both sides of this issue. You know, and I know we're not here evaluating this project today, is it my ideal project? No, but does it have? You know, and I know we're not here evaluating this project today. Is it my ideal project? No, but does it have more potentially positive aspects than negative ones? I think it does. You know, when I zoom out and I consider that is there, does it set a precedent for, quote, condoizing multifamily properties? And thereby potentially disincentivizing affordable or achievable housing, potentially. But the proposed code amendment before us is only about Special Area 1 today. And it's true that there are very few properties that could actually become condos in Special Area 1. So the risk is very, very limited. I think I agree with Ann Nichols that the two-step process for condoizing, quote, again, that's currently allowed is a problem and should be addressed, but we can't fault this proposed amendment because that is currently allowed. This lot has been vacant for a very long time. And vacant lots on our main streets do us zero good. And at the end of the day, building any sort of higher-density residential, whether it's truly mixed use or condos near our town centers, I think is a good thing. I'm not terribly concerned about the STR potential in the future. It is certainly there, but I think we can all agree that STRs really belong concentrated near town centers and not at residential neighborhoods. So to me, that's not as big of a concern as I think about the potential for the future. You know, with all that being said, I'm leaning towards supporting this today. And I really strongly encourage Washoe County to go back and take a hard look at the definition of of mixed use that's in the Tahoe area community plan. As well as take a hard look at what incentives and structures are in place to encourage affordable, achievable housing. I know that, I know for a fact that this project proponent is looking at some lots, has a project moving forward and is looking for more support. So this is not a perfect project, and if I could wave my magic wand, I wish we were making an amendment to the code to to enable it, but I think it's the right decision today. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Drake. Appreciate it. Before we go back to you, Mr. Young, let's see. Okay, Ms. Morales O'Neil. Morales O'Neil, would you like to go ahead and comment?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. It's been really interesting hearing both sides. I think when I read the packet, you know, I knew what I was going, which way I was gonna go, and I really empathize with both sides. But again, I would defer what is in front of us today, right? As a planner, I think the hardest thing is not not to project so much into the future, especially in regards to STRs. But when I look at what is actually presented to us today, I would say that I am in support of this item. But it's a difficult one for sure, and I can, again, empathize with all the things that have been brought up today. It definitely made it, I think, a harder decision for me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Mr. Drake, do you have another comment or is your hand just still up?
Sorry, I will electronically lower my hand.
Thank you. I just wanna jump in here with a comment, just a concern I have. It's something that Ms. Hill brought up in public comment. Since the first motion requires us as APC to approve the required findings as described in Attachment D. I've been spending quite a bit of time rereading Attachment D. And I just have some concerns about the Chapter 4 findings, finding number one that the proposed plan area amendment is consistent with and will not adversely affect implementation of the regional plan, including all applicable goals, policies, et cetera. Ms. Hill read out some of the, or read out the land use regional plan goals focused around affordable housing, moderate housing, et cetera. I was wondering Mr. Stock. Or, is that your last name?
Yeah.
Okay. For some reason, I was saying his last name is Stock. No, it isn't. Or Ms. Waikie, can you speak to that about how your analysis is affirmative that the proposed amendments to the area plan, not focused on the project, are consistent with all the regional plan goals, knowing for those of us that work and and live in the Tahoe Basin, that there is an extreme focus on affordable and not just affordable, moderately affordable housing in the basin. Sorry to put you on the spot with that one.
It's all good. Yeah, Jacob Stock, TRPA, I can make a, just I would like to go back and review this myself in light of those comments. I would add, just like to say, you know, when when TRPA staff are reviewing findings, IEC, other conformance documents that are submitted by an applicant like Washoe County. You know, we are we have a narrow mandate to look at compliance with the regional plan and particularly in the case of the IEC and conformance checklist, where there are limited enforcement mechanisms that we have now for affordable housing. And so I would like to go back and review the findings in light of that, but just, you know, just to say that we are relatively limited in what we can in what is enforceable in terms of like making a finding of conformance or non-conformance.
Okay, so even though we may have goals and policies, what you're saying is maybe the implementation of those has a pretty narrow enforceability?
Yes.
You might wanna hear from Agency Counsel.
Well, I was gonna allow Courtney to respond and then maybe just put a little context to that.
Yeah, Courtney Waikie, Washoe County. I think I would reiterate that this is adding one additional use. It's not taking away any ability for affordable housing, if that was what I was understanding, the focus of that question in that. I mean, so from the county's position, this is not taking away the option of developing affordable housing. It's merely providing another option for a different type of residential use in Special Area 1. Mr. Barry, if I missed, as I was trying to read through finding for a broader point of your question, maybe you can clarify if I didn't answer it specifically.
No, I think that's okay. Mr. Marshall, do you wanna jump in?
Yeah, I don't wanna specifically argue for or against a particular, you know, that's your finding to make, but just the way in which those findings are presented to you is whether or not this particular code amendment is, when it's added to the code, is it, excuse me, to the regional plan, the regional plan amendment for the area plan? Whether or not the regional plan as a whole achieves and maintains thresholds and whether or not you're consistent with those regional plan policies. So and you need to have substantial evidence in the record that you believe supports those findings. Now, you can have a legitimate disagreement on whether or not let's take STRs, for example. You know, whether or not there's evidence in the record to support a plan amendment that will allow condo use that will allow more STRs than if it was just multifamily. I think that's kind of what you're, what I hear zeroing in on. And the question that you have to kind of wrestle with is whether or not that this, that aspect or that issue precludes you from making a finding that it's consistent with, for example, our affordable housing policies to encourage affordable housing. Is there something about adding the gloss over this special area that you can use, you can subdivide into airspace? Does that have an effect that would be inconsistent with encouraging affordable housing? And I also wanted to correct, just I think there may be an impression that this this policy would only apply to vacant lots, and there's very few vacant lots. And so therefore, the reach of this policy is not, is not particularly wide. As I understand it, and I looked to Courtney and Jacob to correct, that it applies to all lots. So if you're going to, you know, do a tear down rebuild or something like that, it would allow, you could move that forward through the two-step subdivision process that would be allowed by this, by this. And Jacob is nodding his head, so I take that as a yes. So it's broader than just the vacant parcels. But you still have to be able to justify those findings that there is something in this that would either not interfere with or you know, actively discourage affordable housing. And I honestly can't remember the other policies that that the speaker raised, Chair. Hopefully that helps a little bit, but it's kind of, you need to look at the record and you need to affirmatively make these findings. And if the record is not there to support it, in your opinion, then that would support a no vote. If the record is there to support it, as I think you've heard both sides articulate, then you can, you can also make the findings to add this policy to the special plan area.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marshall. That, for me, really clarified some things that the way you put it, I really am struggling to make that finding that allowing a subdivision to single family for 46 parcels, I know two of them are publicly owned, but with the fact that we have no control over what happens with the others. Those are all up to the owners of those parcels, which is how America works, which is great. We have no control over that right now. I am struggling with making that finding that making this amendment does not support affordable housing goals and other regional plan housing goals. I'm struggling with that. Ms. Stoller, thanks for taking care of my awkward pause.
Let me jump in and cover the awkward silence. Mr. Chair, I would agree with you. I think I share the same struggles. For me, it has not been demonstrated that even impacts to traffic and transportation have been fully evaluated with this notion that each airspace condo could potentially be converted to an STR within the Special Area 1 plan. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Ms. Stoller. Other APC members that we haven't heard from? Mr. Tashara, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Chairman, knowing that I've seen in the chat, a couple people have to leave and there's still other items on the agenda, if we wanna take those up to sort of move this forward, I'd be prepared to make the first motion. And, you know, the vote will fall where it may, but otherwise, we're sort of getting into a circular discussion here.
Yeah, agreed. We need to make a decision here. We could either postpone this vote and ask for more information. We could proceed with the vote and see how the vote falls. Ms. Chandler has her hand up, and I'd like to give her an opportunity to speak.
Yeah, I'm really thinking outside the box right now because it really seems that the whole conversation we've had is really based on one project, which is two parcels in Special Area 1. It seems to me that in the past, we've been able to take parcels and reassign them to different areas where that might be more appropriate. And I'm looking at a map right now. Those two parcels are right at the intersection of Southwood and Tahoe Boulevard. It seems that they would very easily be able to be incorporated into the Incline Village commercial or the Incline Village Residential, which would have maybe different specifications of zoning requirements, and therefore maybe you don't have to change the zoning for all of SA1 for that one particular project. And that's really thinking outside the box, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Thank you.
Yeah, talking about just a rezone of these two parcels, do you wanna address that, Jacob? I think that's considered more of a spot zoning approach that we really aren't in favor of, but do you wanna elaborate on that?
Yeah, I can just, just say briefly, you know, that idea was proposed early on in this process. And discussions with TRPA and Washoe County, we determined that that would be unwise for us to do, be considered spot zoning of those two parcels. So that is changing the zone of specific parcels for for an intended use without changing it for the zone, which is considered, you know, illegal in some cases.
I think, Jacob, what Susan is suggesting is maybe that because it sits, and I honestly don't have the map in front of me, is it possible to do a bound, you know, a map change that would bring it into another plan area statement? Or another zone that would allow, that has single family as its base zoning, that would allow the subdivision. Susan, the issue is that I'm concerned about is that there may be density allowances in its current location in the town center that allow it to go to 40 units, and if you moved it, you'd lose that. So there's other consequences associated with, if in fact, it's, you know, right on a boundary that shifting it from one boundary to another. While it might solve the larger concern about changing the zoning for Special Area 1, there may be other impacts associated to the particular project.
Thank you. I didn't know that it had been considered, but thank you, Jacob, for letting me know that, and Steve, for your comments.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. We might need some further analysis from staff. All right, any final thoughts before we go to motions here? Would any of my
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chair, with the understanding that, you know, we don't know how the vote will come. But what we do need is some clear direction from APC today, either to staff or or to the governing board, or however that might be. And I find nothing about keeping these parcels blighted that is consistent with the regional plan. So having said that, I will make a motion to recommend approval of the required findings as described in Attachment D, including a finding of no significant effect for adoption of the area plan amendment as described in the staff report and the subject of our discussion today.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. So let's go to a roll call vote. Tracy.
Ms. Chandler?
Sorry, I'm first. I have to abstain. I'm just too drawn. Sorry.
To?
Abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Drake?
Approved.
Ms. Morales O'Neil?
Approve.
Ms. Carr?
Think we lost this car.
Ms. Jacobson?
It's a tough one for me. I'm gonna say deny or no, just because I don't think it's fully fleshed out. I'd like to see a little bit more thought go into it and analysis.
Tracy, I didn't hear that last cup. Did you call on somebody? I'm sorry.
Approve.
Simon?
No.
Mr. Letton?
Abstain.
Ms. Stoller?
No, for the reasons I stated before, I don't believe. The initial environmental checklist is as thorough as it should be.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
We lost, we lost him. Looks like.
I have him as still, I see him on the panelist list.
Mr. Young?
Yes, I just, for some reason, I just was dropped off the meeting. I'm so sorry. I, I just reconnected. I'll vote aye.
Mr. Ferry?
I'm gonna vote no reluctantly. I, I am really trying to stay in my lane as an APC member. As much as I do think it's bad policy to adjust. Zoning after a project is proposed, that's, that's a decision for the governing board to make. I'm not making a no vote based on that. I am really struggling with, as I mentioned, the findings in Chapter Four. For the regional plan affordable housing goals. And agreeing with Ms. Stoller's analysis of STRs and traffic impacts. That this opens up to all of Special Area One with these amendments, so I'm voting no.
Tracy?
Sorry?
Tracy, can I just go through the votes as I have them?
Yes.
I have two abstentions, six yays and four nays.
That's correct.
So APC, you need a majority of the quorum that's present to vote, to affirm. And that would be seven votes. If I have that right or?
So we have twelve present and we need seven and we have six?
Yes.
Is that right, Tracy?
So the motion fails.
Okay.
Is that, I just want to confirm with Tracy that the number vote count is what I have?
Yeah, that's correct.
She says, yes, that's correct.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Steve.
So given, given the failure of the first motion, I don't think we need to proceed to the second motion.
I agree.
Like, I would like to inquire with staff as to what direction they're taking away from this today.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think one, the constructive thing we can do now is to provide feedback on how this project. Excuse me, how this, I'll just say project to amend the area plan could come back to APC and be successful. I, I feel like I voiced my points of weakness. Other no votes, Ms. Jacobson perhaps? Would you care to elaborate? I know you talked about perhaps additional provisions. You know, first floor requirements, et cetera. Ratio of mixed use, inclusionary zoning. Some of those are bigger topics perhaps than just these amendments. But do you want to elaborate at all to provide a direction to staff?
Yeah, I, I would just like to see again some, you know, I'll call it parameters around it. And I think in doing so, let's just say a certain percentage of the. Single-family use or the condos. Are, you know, I don't know, deed restricted for workforce. I think that, that plays into the STR piece, right? Because it limits the number, you know, typically when you restrict for workforce housing. You know, they, they can't be used for STRs. So it, it, it plays into that. So I would look for some, at least some discussion with staff and that, you know, and the county on that. You know, whether or not there's something that you can do to kind of further define what that mixed use piece looks like. I mean, I understand this is, you know, really being proposed for a project. But you're making a change for the district entirely. And, and I know it's not a lot of sites, but I just feel like there should be a little bit more thought or consideration. Around what makes the most sense for that district and for the community moving forward, you know, as a whole, I guess. And not just for this project. So that, yeah, I, I just think like a little bit more fleshing out. I, I, I'm not opposed to it. I love the idea of, you know, development on that site. And, and trying to revitalize our town centers. So I, I would say I'm not opposed to the project or not opposed to making a change to encourage that kind of. Revitalization to happen. I just think it needs a little bit more work. And, and that would, I think that, you know, looking at establishing some parameters may also help on the. You know, the STR side of things, right? And maybe help with that, making, making those findings. So that's my take.
Thank you. Other staff want to weigh in? Ms. Stoller?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. I would, I think the feedback that I would offer is for staff to. To take another crack at completing the initial environmental checklist. But with the viewpoint of evaluating potential environmental impacts. From the perspective of allowing one short-term rental per APN. Consistent with Washoe County's current rules.
Thank you. Other feedback that is constructive?
Chair, this, John Hitchcock here. I voted affirmative, but since the motion did not pass, I, I would encourage staff and the county. To take a look at that mixed use definition. I mean, obviously the area plan, you're allowed to have substitute standards and policy language. Maybe take a harder look at maybe requiring ground floor retail. And only residential above the commercial space. Or require a certain gross floor area be dedicated. To commercial space in order to activate this, activate the streetscape.
Thank you, Hitch. Mr. Tashara?
Just to build on John's point, and I was gonna ask this before I ask it now. So we've heard that the definition of mixed use was, came up at our pick and is gonna be discussed, I guess, by the governing board. My question of agency staff, what, what's the timing of that? When do you think there might be a resolution on that issue? I, I appreciate all the points of view expressed today. You know, this, this development team has put together a lot of money into this project. And, you know, they shouldn't have to wait for an extended period of time beyond what's already happened to get it answered. So I'm hoping that the mixed use discussion and definition will be forthcoming in, you know, a reasonable period of time. Mr. Marshall, do you know?
Do you want to start?
I can respond to that and, and John Marshall can elaborate. At this point, we don't have a timeline. For the regional level, that's gonna require. You know, working with all of, all of the local governments. Probably working with a stakeholder group. It's something that I believe could be addressed. More expeditiously through the Tahoe area plan. So rather than at the regional level, at least for the, the purposes of this project. It would be more expeditious to address that at the area plan level rather than the regional level. However, we are looking at it at the regional level, but have no timeline at this time.
Appreciate your candor and I would encourage Ms. Waiki and others at the county then to think about that. In the Washoe County context.
Mr. Marshall, anything to add to that or are we good?
No, I think staff and Washoe County has heard your, heard the APC's input. You know, the APC has made a recommendation on the, the, the first motion. And in coordination with Washoe, yeah, Washoe County and senior staff. We can then determine the best course forward. It may be taken to the governing board, as is with the recommend, with your recommendation. Or the, it really is a failure to make a recommendation. And. Then, you know, or Washoe County may want to make some policy amendments. Or we'll figure out the next appropriate steps.
So just so I can clarify that for all of us, even though we are not recommending. Even though we failed to pass Motion One, this could still go to governing board and be approved.
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure everyone's aware of that.
Well, I think the public really needs to be aware of that.
Yeah, I think we just stated it about as clearly as we can.
If I may, and maybe, Mr. Marshall, you and I can talk offline. I've, I've seen this elsewhere, so the, there isn't necessarily a recommendation of denial. There is just not a recommendation because the motion did not pass. And it will be up to the county on whether or not we would be going forward with a no recommendation to the governing board. I'm not sure I understand.
I agree with you, the first part of what you said, not the second part.
Okay.
It failed to get a recommend, a, a, a recommendation to approve and that was the motion.
Okay. Okay. We may need to.
And we would supply the, we would supply within the staff report, the distribution of votes.
Okay, thank you.
If we were to go forward on that basis.
We didn't get to the approval. It was only the approval of the findings. I think that's an important.
Correct.
Station, yes, thank you.
Okay. I think I'm gonna close the discussion on Item 5A unless there's any final thoughts from anyone. Staff?
I just have one, one final comment and that is that. It was mentioned, I think, in the public comments that this is a blighted area. And that it would be improved by the nine-four-seven project. But it could also be improved by making it open space or park. Just a comment, just a comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on. I'm gonna make a recommendation. It's twelve forty-five. We've been hard at it. I'm gonna say and recommend that we continue Item 5B and 5C to next month. Since they're informational items. Would that be okay with staff?
Sounds like a terrific idea to me.
Unless no one likes to eat or go to the bathroom around here.
That's okay with me.
Okay, we have, we have confirmation from staff. We will continue those items. We'll stay tentatively till next month. Unless we have a full agenda next month already on approvable items and maybe it'll be the month after. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let's, we're not done yet though. Hold the phone. We still have reports. We're gonna go through those quickly. And then we'll wrap up, okay? So let's go to Item Six, Reports. And I'm gonna go over to Ms. Chevalier for the Executive Director Report, including the twenty-twenty-two annual report. On page one-twenty-five of your packets, Tahoe In Brief Governing Board Monthly Report on page one-seventy-seven of your packets and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon now, everyone. Again, my name is Kimberly Chevalier. I just accepted the role as Chief, Chief Partnerships Officer here at TRPA, Deputy Director. I was going to do a presentation at the last agenda item originally that we just continued. But I can cover that a lot in this Executive Director Report. The, we just released the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two annual report from TRPA that's included in your packet. And if you thumb through that, you'll see a lot of accomplishments since the twenty-twenty, twenty-twelve regional plan update. Along with our accomplishments for this past year. Part of my later presentation was gonna cover a lot of the environmental improvement accomplishments for the last year. And particularly the work that the partnership is doing around the prioritization of projects for Lake Tahoe Restoration Act funding. We are in the process of submitting our last year's request for FY twenty-four to our congressional delegation on March fifteenth. So we are really excited about the new legislation that just got introduced last week. To extend the Lake Tahoe Restoration, Restoration Act into twenty thirty-four. So we are looking forward to see that move forward. I can cover more about that again when I, we, when I'm back to give that presentation on the EIP. But in my new role, as many of you worked with me before as the Environmental Improvement Division Manager previously. And I facilitated the Tahoe Interagency Executive Steering Committee and really valued working with partners and really moving forward. The EIP and the collaborative partnership. I'm still really excited and committed to doing that in the new role. And so I'm looking forward to working with all of you, many of you, EIP partners on the committee. And with many in the basin to just continue the great work we're doing in the EIP. So I think that's all I'm gonna cover for today.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it, Kim. Okay, and now I'm gonna go to Mr. Marshall, General Counsel Status Report.
LRE, you may be the only one interested in this, but we got a, a positive opinion out of the District Court. In a non-litoral buoy litigation that was brought over, the Brian Buoy on the West Shore. That essentially said that a core grandfathering letter is not adequate to establish. Both. Pre-seventy-two and government and a governmental approval. So if anyone else is interested in that, we can forward you that, that ruling. And there's other stuff going on, but I'll save it for next month.
Great, thank you, Mr. Marshall. Appreciate it. All right, quickly, let's go to APC member reports. I'm just gonna go across my screen. So if you have anything relevant to share, we'd love to hear it. I'll start with Mr. Tashara, are you there? May not be, let me move. Yes, he's there. He appeared.
Yes, I've taken up a lot of time today, so I have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Ms. Chandler?
Uh, nothing to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock.
Um, just a few things, the city last night, we released a city, a city press release. Just urging our residents to take the threat of roof collapse seriously and to prepare for the pending storm. For those that need sandbags are available behind Fire Station Number Three, which is accessible from James Ave, James Avenue. And then also, it just came across my email, the city manager issued a local emergency proclamation to the city south of Tahoe. For the pending severe winter storm and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hitchcock. Ms. Jacobson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Similar to what John just mentioned, the county also issued a emergency proclamation yesterday. And we're just dealing with the impacts of the storm, heavy impacts in the foothills. We've had an avalanche here up in Tahoe. And so just doing the same thing, offering sandbags. We have a ready placer page where folks can go and get all the information on the storm situation. And including, you know, warming centers and, and resources available to help folks. So, and then I have one other update, the Tahoe Basin Area Plan Amendments that the county's been working on. We had a workshop that was scheduled for tomorrow night. But because of the storm, it has been rescheduled to March twenty-third. That's an in-person workshop and will be at the Kings Beach, the North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. And is from five to seven PM on the twenty-third. That's it for me.
I have nothing to report. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, Ms. Simon?
No report.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ferris?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Mr. Young?
Uh, thank you so much, everyone, for such a great discussion on the Washoe County item today. I really appreciate everybody's sincere engagement. I really liked the discussion on findings. Uh, it's so important that we focus on findings and the, the housing findings in particular. It made me think that, that they do seem maybe a little subjective. I, I, I watched people look at exactly the same thing and see two different things. And that's perfectly legitimate, that, that happens, but it's not helpful to us as a board. And so I would love to see in the future, maybe a, a, an agenda item where we can, uh, uh, talk about. Um. The, maybe the housing findings in particular, and if there is a way to. Understand what they mean a little bit better, understand if there's a way to quantify them or to do something. To maybe make them a little bit less subjective for all of us, um, and to see if that might be. Might be helpful, but thank you so much, everyone, for the discussion today.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Drake?
No updates today. Thank you.
Okay, uh, that comes to me. I just have a couple of quick things. We also, our board declared, uh, declaration of emergency yesterday. Similar to exactly what John and Crystal said, everyone is really struggling out there. A lot of people are scared. Uh, roof collapses are a very serious issue. Blood concerns are coming. Uh, we have, we have real issues this winter here in Tahoe. And so everyone, please be aware, uh, we are offering free sandbags as well. And the last thing I'll say is that our C A O, Don Ashton, did retire effective March third, and we have a new interim C A O. Who is Tiffany Schmidt, who is in that role right now. Uh, that is it for A P C member reports. Our last item is item seven, public interest comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the A P C at this time, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your zoom screen. Or by dialing star nine on your phone. Please note, A P C is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public not listed on the agenda. Catherine, one last time. Hopefully the owl will hear us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, there are no hands raised to comment on this item.
Okay. That leaves us item eight, which is adjournment. Again, thank you all for the robust discussion. That's why A P C exists. Thank you all for digging in and analyzing that project. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We stand adjourned at twelve fifty-three. Everyone be safe.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.